Well, Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome to our January Selectmen's Meeting. Very happy to have so many fresh, smiling faces here. We have a couple of orders of business before we get to the thing I think you're here for most of all, but they'll go quick, I'm sure. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to rise and ask Selectman Mills to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir.
(Inaudible)
We changed it a couple of times.
(Inaudible)
I.
(Inaudible)
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. For those of you who don't commonly come to our Selectmen's Meeting, at the beginning of each meeting, we offer any citizen the opportunity to get up and bring some new business to the Selectmen, something that's not on the agenda, which I know most of you are, but if you had something that wasn't on the agenda that you thought was important for the Selectmen to hear, we offer the opportunity for anybody to get up and speak, and that happens at the beginning of all of our meetings. So, tonight, is there anybody who has new business? Mr. Nicholson, I saw your hand first, sir. We ask people, and those who aren't, again, who are not common participants here, this is being filmed by D-CAT. We have cameras throughout the room, and we ask people to go to the podium, announce who they are, and speak to the mic, so that people who are watching from home can know what's going on as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Board Members, Mr. Collins, Town Manager. Thank you for recognizing me. I am Bill Nicholson, Precinct 8 Town Meeting Member. I've lived at 209 Center Street for sixty-odd years, and the reason I point that out is many of those years I've complained about the water pressure in Precinct 8. I was told by former town engineer, Rick Rogers, that there was going to be a pumping station installed on Green Street during the summer months. I haven't seen any action. The reason I rise tonight is that I know we have a lot of unhappy people in Precinct 8 and have for a number of years because of the water pressure. So, if I could through you, Mr. Chairman, ask the Town Manager at some point to recognize me and give me an update on what's going on, so I can let my precinct members know what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I refer this to the Town Manager for follow-up. Again, people who aren't here normally. People who get up on the new business, offer some ideas, suggestions, thoughts, questions. We obviously aren't prepared to answer them because we haven't had a chance to look into them. So, initially, when they come before us, we may ask a few questions, but generally, we look to get answers from the town, appropriate town departments, and we'll update it at the next or as soon as we have the information at a follow-up meeting. So, thank you very much. Mr. Bradstreet.
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. Danvast is a unique town, run very well by the Town Manager and several boards. My concern was that tonight, there are two important board meetings scheduled for the same night, same time, but in two different locations far apart. My request is, could we possibly do a different job, not a better, but a different job of scheduling meetings, so this kind of a conflict doesn't take place? There are items going to be discussed at both meetings, and it's difficult for me or other townspeople to make a decision which board to attend, and then afterwards realize that you should have gone to the other one because of how it transpires and the questions or what statements are made. So, if it's possible, could someone maybe do a different job of arranging these meeting schedules, please?
Sure. So, understandably, with the holidays and knowing that they were coming up, we, this board meets the first and third Tuesday of every month, and obviously, New Year's Eve, we weren't going to hold a meeting. So, we pushed it off. We talked about it as board members and set up a schedule in the fall for the upcoming year. I understand your concern. It's a real concern. Unfortunately, we only have four business nights a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and if you look at our calendar, you'll find they're pretty full. But with your thought in mind, not that it's not important, we will try to be more cognizant of that in the future, and it might not be this board that moves, it might be another board, but we'll work on trying to minimize the impact.
Thank you. Each board has an important part in the town's operation. It's difficult, tonight especially, to know which board meeting to attend. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please.
Is the Planning Board planning on meeting the same Tuesday night as we next, in two weeks?
Yes, it is.
So, I'll just, maybe the Town Manager can look at that.
Okay. Thank you. Good thought. All right. Is there anybody else with new business? Mr. Bettencourt. Welcome.
Real quick, thank you very much. Rick Bettencourt, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. I just came back from a business trip. One of my constituents in the precinct asked me to bring up a request to the Town Manager for maybe to push this to the Traffic Advisory Committee. Someone in Precinct 5 is requesting the addition of a stop sign at the intersections of Short Road, Coolidge, and Belgian, North Belgian. Apparently, there's been a lot of students coming from the high school, cutting through that area, coming down Mass Ave, Cabot, cutting across, and then coming through and picking up Coolidge Road, going down Short, Belgian, then to get to 62. So, one of the families has just recently moved on to Belgian. They have five kids, and my friend just moved on to Belgian, North Belgian, and they have two young ones. So, if we could put that to the Traffic Advisory Committee to have them take a look at that, and I think it'd be prudent to put two stop signs right there to have people kind of come to a complete stop. So, thank you.
Short Road is North Belgian, right?
Short, yeah. Short comes into Belgian on the left and North Belgian on the left, Belgian on the right, and then as Coolidge comes across the top, so.
And I believe, Dan, you're the liaison to the Traffic Advisory Committee, so you've gotten two points of contact tonight.
Good. Thank you.
Is there any other new business this evening? Thank you very much. Hearing none? I'll move to the agenda. The Board will recognize Danvast Middle School art students who participated in the Danvast Lions Club poster contest. I'd like to start with you, Mr. Town Manager, if you'd like to introduce the subject.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a sneaking suspicion this is the item everybody's here for, not the warrant review, because we can usually, you can usually count on one hand the number of attendees we have at our meetings. Reverend Bill Graham is in attendance, as are many of the middle school students who participated in the poster contest that he's going to describe. I'm not sure if Jeff Saret, the middle school art teacher, is here as well. So, nobody must hear me talk. I'll turn it over to Reverend Graham, and he can describe what the system.
Well, thank you, Steve. And thank you for, you know, Lisa Dana, the schools, for helping us get started with this whole thing. Lions Clubs was begun in 1918 by Melvin Jones. He discovered that we needed some way of people being able to serve other people, and he found some like members, and in 1925, Helen Keller addressed them and charged them to become Knights of the Blind in the Crusade Against Darkness. We're now the largest service organization in the year, in the world. About thirty years ago, the peace poster contest was started for 11, 12, and 13-year-olds around the world. They typically get somewhere on the order of 350,000 entrants from 65 or 70 countries around the world. So, this is just a huge contest. Local clubs start, have a contest, and they pass it on to district and multiple districts, and then they go to the international competition. We've just have some wonderful artists, 11, 12, and 13-year-olds for this contest. The posters, each year, there's a different theme. The posters are to be judged by three criteria: the artwork itself, representation of the theme. This year's theme was kindness matters and originality, and you can certainly see all of those represented extremely well in the posters that we have here. The grand, international picks 24 finalists, and of them, one grand prize winner gets a reward at the United Nations in the spring, and that's because Melvin Jones, I mentioned earlier, wrote the UN Charter for all the different service organizations, UNESCO and UNICEF and all those. So, there's a special day for Lions Club, and the peace poster contest is very much a part of that day. So, we're fortunate that Jeff Saret, the middle school art teacher, really conducted the whole contest for us, and I'll turn things over to him.
(Inaudible) can you come on over? Okay. Well, thank you so many people for coming in tonight and enjoying the artwork that we have on display. This is representative of a lot of hard work by these kids, and I think it's just wonderful that so many people are here to appreciate it. So, we're going to be calling some names over, and I think, I'm going to have you pull over here.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So, if you hear your name, if you can come on over and receive your certificate and your prize, that'd be fantastic. Rebecca Brown. Congratulations. Michaela Cunningham.
Excuse me. Could you actually, Rebecca and the others who follow, could you point to which picture is yours?
Yeah, we'd really like to know.
Oh, boy.
You can go over and stand by your picture.
Maybe if the kids can go over, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, that would be really nice.
Let's send all of the artists over, please. Yes, all of the artists can go over and stand. That way, you'll have an opportunity to show your artwork before you come over. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to know who did that.
Even the room out a little.
(Laughter).
We'll change directions. We can make this work.
Here we go.
So, kiddos, when I call your name, if you're willing to hold up your work, Rebecca, where are you? If you can hold up your work so everybody can see it, that would be wonderful.
Oop.
It's on a neezel, so just, there you go.
Very nice.
Very good. Thank you. The next artist we have is Michaela Cunningham. Congratulations. And if you can go hold up your work. And next, we have...
Well, you can probably just do a Vanna White thing and point to it. Thank you.
Yes.
There you go.
I'd like to invite up Alana Godboys.
Lily, which is yours? Very nice.
And then we have Jamie Walsh, please. Alex Dos Santos. Sophia Wilcox. And now, we're going to introduce our first, second, and third-place winners, and we're going to start with Sadie Buku, who had won third place.
Which one is yours, Sadie? Thank you.
And our first-place winner, Kaylee Bettencourt. You do. You have a couple of awards right here.
And, yes, Kaylee's artwork was given third place in District 33N for the Lions, and everybody who attended a meeting voted, and she was the first place for the People's Choice Award at that meeting, so. So, being very biased, I thought the people that voted overall did a better job of picking things than the people who were on the committee to pick them.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, folks, for letting us come tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you to Dr. Dan and the school community members who also came and joined us. Now, we understand that the rest of the meeting may not be what you came for, so...
Sure, ask, go ahead.
Maybe to Mr. Saret. I noticed that a lot of international flag, and I'm just wondering, how did they, it seems to be a lot, and it's the kindness to others. So, what was, what made them draw this? I mean, it's amazing what, each one tells a story that is so much more than a 13-year-old, so I'm a little surprised.
Honestly, it was tricky to hit on kindness matters with every composition, and the kids did their best to make that work. So, the first umbrella theme was global and international peace, so they really looked at symbols that they could possibly tap into for their artwork throughout the world. And if you notice with most of the compositions, a lot of figurative stuff happening with people interacting together in happy, hopeful manners. So, I think that's what the kids went for.
Some of this stuff is beyond their age, and I'm seeing Mother Teresa, and I'm saying, there had to have been something to make somebody go to Mother Teresa, because they didn't know her. So, it's just, you can tell there was a lot of work done. It's just...
It's pretty amazing what some of these people do.
I'm sorry, what happened? Did you see Vanna White? (Laughter). I hope that's not what they're studying.
And these pieces will be moving over to the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration, which is held just in two weeks or so over at the high school. It's always a wonderful event, and we have artwork on display from Danvast arts students, kindergarten through eighth grade over there. It's really wonderful, and these pieces plus probably another 100 to 150 more will be there. So, hopefully, people can make it over for that event as well.
Mr. Mills?
Steve, this stuff is so fantastic. It will be a shame if it just ends at Martin Luther King. It seems as though, whiz, Lisa, if it could be published throughout the school buildings, you know, and circulated around so that throughout this school year, for example, this artwork will be displayed, encouragement to other kids, getting ready for next year's concerts, but it's too good to put away after Martin Luther King. So, whatever can be done to make it available should be, I think, should be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you for your encouragement.
One more comment I'd like to add, and that is internationally, there's basically two symbols of peace that are recognized all over the world. One is the dove, and the other is the olive branches. And so, what we see in the U.S. isn't recognized worldwide very often.
Thank you. So, at this point, I'm going to ask the board to take a five-minute recess, so proud parents can take photographs and do that sort of thing, and then, you're welcome. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want, unless you want a civics lesson today, so. Very good. Congratulations, everyone.
Excellent.
This time, we'll move to the next agenda item of the meeting. The Board will review of the warrant for the February 4, 2019 special town meeting. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board received copies of the warrant explanation in their packets this past Friday. We do have a couple of copies here tonight, and I would just make a note, we did put the warrant online today, so anybody that goes to the town website will find a version of the draft warrant with explanation on the town's website. The first item, we have two items that are on the agenda for the special town meeting that's been scheduled for February 4, 2019. The first is a supplemental appropriation in Chapter 90 funds that was part of a recommendation that the governor made to the legislature, that the legislature supported based on positive year-end for the fiscal '19 state budget, and that was a $40 million additional appropriation to the $200 million that had been appropriated through the budget, through the formula. Typically, the town's formula results in roughly $900,000 in Chapter 90 funding that we use for local roadway improvements. The supplemental amount that we're eligible for is $181,028. And so, by voting this article at the special town meeting, that will allow for these funds to be added to the funds that we have available for our spring pavement program. The MMA generally pushes for a $300 million Chapter 90 bond bill, and we generally, $200 million has been the appropriation level for quite some time. There was a supplemental appropriation a couple of years ago after the bad winter in recognition of the damage that was sustained on the roadways. This supplemental, on the other hand, is a result of positive state receipts. So, I'd be happy to entertain questions about this item, but it's a pretty straightforward request.
Bill, do you have any questions about Article 1?
Nope.
David, Article 1, any questions?
Sorry.
Do you have any questions about the first article, Article 1?
No, sounds just right.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. And Steve, I think you'll agree that it's still a shortfall what the communities need to upkeep the roadways. I think I read that it's, we could use $685 million a year to give out to the towns and the communities. We're that far behind in keeping our roads up to date, so this is certainly helpful, but we certainly could use a lot more in the communities.
Thank you. I have no questions. This evening, we are hearing the warrant for the first time as Selectmen, but I'd like to give the audience opportunity to speak to the warrant articles, very specifically to the focus of the warrant article that's before us. So, is there anybody who has any discussion about Article 1, the State Public Works Grant? No, thank you. Mr. Town Manager.
So, the second article is the one, it's the headliner tonight. This is the Ivan G. Smith Elementary School. I'll ask if we could kill the first light there. So, we have a brief presentation that's been prepared, and for those who don't have a warrant in front of them, the presentation does follow pretty well the narrative that's in the warrants that the Board has. Just before I get into this, just kind of looking ahead, the Finance Committee, if the Selectmen forward both of these articles on, they would go to the Finance Committee next Tuesday in this room, and then there's a, we have a Saturday workshop at this point that's been scheduled for 9:00 a.m., also in this room for town meeting members. Invitations, I believe, have already gone out to the town meeting members, and this is a model that we started using for zoning updates last December. Town meeting is a pretty formal meeting. It's run as a very formal meeting by the town moderator, and we found that with the zoning updates, the Saturday workshop provided a nice opportunity for town meeting members to ask more detailed questions in a less, in a more informal way in the run-up to the town meeting. So, because this is a big project, we thought it made a lot of sense to have a similar workshop, so that's scheduled for Saturday, January 26, in this room. Light refreshments will be served, and it's an opportunity for town meeting members or non-town meeting members to come and learn about the project and ask questions. So, the presentation tonight is a variation on the presentation that was made before the holidays at the middle school. It's been shortened a little bit because members of this board have seen similar presentations before, and it's been modified just slightly based on new information from before the holidays. So, I think we'll start with the presentation and then maybe make a couple of comments on the narrative itself, and then I would turn it back over to the Board for discussion. So, I was looking around to see who would advance it, but I guess that's me. The first slide here provides some of the context for the project and how we got to where we are. The Smith Elementary School was built in 1973. I like to point out, and I think I would give a nod to Tappee Architects. Charlie Hayes is the architect of record on the project, and he pointed out during the proposal process to work on the project, he did his diligence and discovered that it did in fact win a national award for architecture back in the '70s when it was built. But we would point out, a lot of things were built in the '70s that have not withstood the test of time, and this school is one of them. As you see on the screen, the school had no major renovations in its 45 years. In 2011, there was corrosion in the steel, this is a steel and concrete building, so the walls were showing corrosion. Public Works was patching some of those holes. The second roof had reached the end of its useful life, and a lot of the building mechanicals were starting to show their age. And more importantly, the building as an open-concept school really didn't support the curriculum and the education programming that Danvast Public Schools was implementing across the rest of the district. So, in 2013, the town made its first application to the state, to the MSBA, which is the Mass School Building Association, to partner with the town. The town has partnered with the MSBA on most of its school-building projects, and if the MSBA accepts a school project, they agree to fund a certain portion of that project, which we'll get into a little bit later in the presentation. The town applied three times, and on the fourth application, in 2016, the school was accepted into the program. The MSBA funding source is a portion of the state sales tax, and there are always more applications for support than there are available funds, so it is a very competitive program. But in March of 2016, the school was accepted into the program, and in May, town meeting appropriated $1.8 million to begin feasibility and design of the new project. Shortly after that town meeting, a school-building committee was formed. Several members of that committee are in the audience tonight. This committee had representation from the Selectmen, the school committee, the Finance Committee, staff, residents, town meeting members, and the residents were neighbors so that we had folks who lived in the neighborhood and were able to go back and talk to some of their neighbors.
Is this in the school?
Good question. It's on La Beaux Drive, and if your next question is, where is La Beaux Drive?
It's up behind St. John's.
That's correct. We added this intro section because someone at the last presentation said it'd be nice to have some background, and I guess I should have started with a map to show where the schools locate. So, as we'll discuss, the school that's been proposed is quite a bit larger than the existing school. As part of any MSBA project, there is a student enrollment projection that's done out 10 years from the application date, so in this case, a projection was done out to the 2025 school year, and the town had proposed replacing the Smith School with a similarly-sized school. The MSBA came back and said, you're going to be experiencing some student growth that you haven't seen in a long time. The town was quite skeptical when it received that information from the MSBA, but a couple of things are worth pointing out. In 2005, the same group was able to project to within one kindergarten what our actual 2015 student, our class was. Our current kindergarten class is the largest the town has ever seen, and as we'll discuss in the budget process, the school department is starting to see pressure on staffing. So, they've added one staff person, I believe, this, in the current year, and will probably be facing an additional staff person per year for the next few years to start to accommodate some of that growth. So, we were skeptical, but I think, you know, we have a lot of confidence in the work that the MSBA does. They've been very accurate historically, and so they came back and said, we really believe you guys should be planning for a larger elementary school. Otherwise, you'll be having to add on to one of your other schools at some point, and in that scenario, you're paying all of the soft costs and staging costs twice. So, building a bigger school while we had a school project in front of us seemed to be the prudent approach. Once that was underway, we hired PMA to serve as the owner's project manager. We have Joe DeSantis and Kevin Nygro in the audience tonight from PMA. This is the, in state, in Massachusetts, under state law, for a project this size, towns and cities are required to have a professional team that looks out for the town's best interests, so they represent the town, and they assisted us in hiring Tappee Architects through a very competitive process to design the project that we're talking about. So, by the time we get to town meeting, we will have had 20 plus or minus project-related public meetings on this project. Three community forums were held. We had a display set up at the town open house, so the people who were attending the open house and present at Town Hall could learn about the project. We've had a number of presentations to this board. We've had presentations before D-TAC, and beyond the public meetings, there have been quite a few meetings with town divisions, public safety, to make sure that the specific aspects of the project that they were experts in could be addressed in terms of school security and building systems and things like that. Throughout the project, a number of the concerns that were raised by the neighbors... Throughout the project, a number of the concerns that were raised by the neighbors really sort of ran in parallel with concerns that the committee had, that staff had identified, and that was improving the traffic flow on the site and off the site, and mitigating park, you know, adding to the parking on the site, and trying to bring some of the on-street parking currently in the neighborhood onto the site. And Charlie Hayes will be able to show a couple of slides that really kind of drill into that in a few minutes. And we've already talked about the workshop that's been scheduled for the twenty-sixth. So one of the questions that's asked is, you know, did we look at renovating, simply renovating the existing school? And actually, the MSBA requires, any project that they participate in, you have to look at three options. You have to look at a renovation option, you have to look at an addition to the existing school with a renovation aspect, and then new construction. And as noted on this slide, renovation really didn't make a lot of sense. We're very limited in what you can do inside an open-concept school made of concrete and steel. It wouldn't have addressed the growth, and it would have been the most disruptive to the students. The addition renovation project, a number of the concerns from above would still apply, and it would have disrupted the students for the two-year duration of the project, and it actually was more expensive than the straight, than the new construction. And so the conclusion that the school committee came to with assistance from the design team was something that the MSBA also identified as being really kind of the only option for the project, and that is to construct the new school next to the existing school and then bring the old school down once the new school is up and running. That way, the students will have a learning environment for the duration of the project, and during the summer of two thousand and twenty-one, the staff can move into the new space so that the students can be prepared for the fall of two thousand and twenty-one. We had, we've already spoken a little bit about the growth projections. This slide shows how the capacity for the new school was calculated. It's, the MSBA analysis is on the website, and essentially, the nineteen hundred and five students is their forecast looking ahead, and the analysis is to take a look at the capacity of our current schools and determine what the delta is, and that ended up allowing for the four hundred and sixty-five student capacity that was designed for the school. And I know that we have the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, as well as a school committee member in the audience tonight. The growth that the town will be experiencing won't all be in the Smith District, so one of the things that they're looking at in parallel with the process we're going through now is, where can we look at some flexible zoning across the districts to make sure that this growth is accommodated evenly throughout the five schools? Process and timeline, nobody can read, these are too small to see anyway, and I wouldn't read all those even if I could, but you can see the "you are here" bubble. This really, I think what this shows more than anything is that, you know, these processes are not short. This, you know, as I mentioned, we started in two thousand and eleven, we started to identify the need, we started applying to participate in this program in two thousand and thirteen. The project really formally started in two thousand and sixteen, and now we're in two thousand and nineteen, and it'll be two thousand and twenty-one if the town meeting supports this project on February fourth, when the new school actually opens. So ten years from really the, kind of the concept of the need. And this following slide really just kind of zooms in on the immediate portion of that timeline to show sort of over the past year where the project has been. The first three, four bullets really are MSBA milestones that had to be met, you know, with the support of the school-building committee and the design team to get us to where we are. The MSBA voted to formally accept the project budget and schematic design in December, and so we're looking now, if the town meeting supports the project on February fourth, the contract documents and bidding would happen right through late summer, fall. Some of the preliminary site work could probably start this summer or fall, and we'd be looking at a project completion in two thousand and twenty-one, new school opening in the fall, and then the old school coming down and the final paving for the parking lot being done at that time. And with that, I would invite Charlie Hayes from Tappee to the microphone, and he can give me cues, and I'll advance the slides for him.
Of the two million, how much is accounted?
We'll get to that in a minute.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for the audience to hold the questions. We're gonna go through the presentation, we're gonna ask the selectmen to ask their questions, and then we'll go to the audience. Thank you.
Good evening. Charlie Hayes from Tappee Architects. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through my portion of the presentation quite briskly because I think that this board is relatively familiar with the design. However, I don't for a minute want you to think I'm trying to, you know, if you have questions, please ask, and if I'm going too quickly, please let me know. This is the proposed site plan for the new building, and you can just barely see on the right-hand side, dashed in red, where the existing school is. So as the town manager mentioned, the placement of the building gives the town the opportunity to maintain the existing school throughout construction without disruption generally to the programs, and that's a positive. Oh, am I getting a clicker?
You're getting a laser pointer.
Oh, fantastic. Can I actually advance the slides with that? No?
You can try, and if you can't, just shout.
You can dream. Anyway, so there's our existing building, and here's our proposed building, and here's the existing soccer field, which will also, which will also stay, although it will be closed for the duration of construction for obvious reasons. We don't want people walking around a construction site. You want to advance the slide. Some of the questions that have come up over the course of the design phase about site design have included the issue of pickup and drop-off sequence for cars, because obviously, it's a reasonable question, we have a much larger school population, have a lot more cars, right, and more buses. So what we have now is an existing school that's quite close to the entrance to really to where the property starts for the school, and it's a one-lane road. If buses stop in front of the school, then any vehicle behind them, when it has their flashers on, stop. Therefore, we can't queue very many cars, which is one of the reasons that you have experience up there with cars parking off-site, and in fact, the school has taken to a policy of escorting students off-site to get to cars. And even if those buses weren't there, the reality is, people are gonna stop in front of the front of the door anyway. The proposed plan, which puts the building much further to the west, gives us a lot more queuing space for cars. It allows up to six buses to sit in front of the school, and it splits the car and the bus traffic into two roadways, which means that cars do not have to stop when a bus has the flashers on, it can go by, which means it's an active car queue, which means that it can keep moving during the course of the morning drop-off and the afternoon pickup. So it should, it should make a significant improvement to the traffic conditions at the site. Next slide, please, sorry. Another question that's related is about traffic, is about parking, which is also a good question that's come up. This site plan, which is on the right, increases our parking capacity on-site by three times, and we are increasing our population by less than two times. So this is a significant increase in parking spaces on-site. And by having, the school is estimating seventy to seventy-five staff members at full capacity, which means that if every one of them has a car, we can fit them in a seventy-five-space lot that's designated for faculty and staff, and that still allows us an additional almost fifty spaces for visitors, for parents who are dropping off their students and would like to walk them into the school, for parents who'd like to pick up their student and walk into school and get their student. So the active pickup and drop-off, which again, does not conflict with buses, should help significantly with any kind of traffic problem going off of the site. Next slide, please. And the final topic around the site design that has been a question that has come up in terms of frequently asked questions has been around service. What we have on-site now is an existing building with a dumpster that's right out in the open and a service entrance, if you can call it that, which is kind of on the lower level of the school. As you know, if you know the site, it drops off in the back. Any service vehicle is driving into what is actually the hardscape play area for students, so we have a direct conflict between vehicles and students, which is never a sound site planning policy. The proposed plan puts the service area on the far side of the new building. All of the play area is directly adjacent to where the students are in school, the classroom wings, while the service area is in the rear, it's, or on the backside. And I think they wanted to wait on the questions. Should we take questions?
Questions from the audience, we're gonna hold off until after the selectmen.
Got it. So there's also, it's heavily planted and screened, and also has screen walls, but it should not disrupt in any way the kind of active play area on the exterior, which right now is the case. So this should be in improved condition around student safety and around service. Next slide, please. The proposed building, next slide, please, is organized with most of the public, this is the main entrance, right along the drive as I showed you. You enter into a lobby. The public functions, the cafeteria, the gym, administration are up front, and service. So that, again, service is close to the main street. Visitors immediately are greeted by administration, but really, this whole front piece can act as a public building effectively. It could be used on weekends, it could be used in evenings. The classroom wing, the academic spaces are in the rear, and these actually could get closed off. So you could use this building on a Saturday, the gym could get used for weekend basketball league, et cetera, et cetera. The way the classroom wing is organized is, there are two kind of academy spaces, one for the kindergarten on the first floor, and one for the fifth grade on the upper floor, because those are more, those are the transition years, those are the transition grades for elementary school. So they have somewhat different learning kind of requirements, so they get their own zones. But then the rest of it is kind of an L-shaped classroom wing that could be organized by grade. The presumption now is that K-one and two will be on the lower floor, that three, four, and five will be on the upper floor. It's a split-level plan, which means that you're going down a half a flight of stairs or up a half a flight of stairs to get to this classroom wing. So you're not going down a whole flight of stairs or up a whole flight of stairs, which is nice, particularly for the little kids with shorter legs. And they can go directly out to play from here. Art and music is on this lobby space so that if they have events, if they have musical performances, that, you know, the public can come see that, and obviously, the public directly can go into places like the cafeteria and the gym. The other interesting feature of this plan at the request of the district is that there's a platform, you know, a stage effectively, that actually opens both into the cafeteria and into the gym, which is kind of neat. So you have two different-sized venues, a large venue, the gym, that holds a lot of people, a smaller, more intimate venue, the cafeteria, which holds less people. So depending on your, the kind of performance or presentation that is happening, and depending on the audience size, this gives the school an awful lot of flexibility around how that is accomplished. Next slide, please. This is a plan, I think I've shown you. Here's the public zone, here's the rear zone. Next slide, please. And that's the upper level, where you see the fifth grade here. There's a lot of shared spaces in the center of the classroom wing, bathrooms, pull-out spaces. There is a library on the first floor and a STEM space on the second floor, a big project room, which is gonna be really exciting. And then, as I said, the classrooms are typically arrayed around that central zone. These classrooms, these corridors are also widened and become these extended learning zones. So there's multiple ways of students working either in small groups or individually or with a teacher, either in the classroom or outside the classroom. So this is gonna give the district and the school a lot of flexibility around how they teach, which is very exciting as well. Next slide, please. I am not talking about project costs, although I'm very familiar with them, but Joe DeSantis from PMA is gonna do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, everyone. Joe DeSantis, PMA consultants, owner's project manager, fighting off a bit of a cold, so excuse my raspy voice. So as your OPM, our main role is to serve as liaison between the Town of Danvers and the MSBA. We also manage the schedule, the budget. We have monthly MSBA submissions, monthly reimbursement requests we put in, we oversee the design, we make sure that it's on budget, and we make sure that you're getting everything you need and want. We're on-site every day throughout construction, through closeout, we're your eyes and ears for the project. Without further ado, thank you, Steve. So before we kind of talk about the numbers, I wanted to briefly speak about the MSBA process. So the MSBA program really is a prescribed design program with eight different modules, multiple submittals. We just did our third a couple of months ago, which is called Schematic Design. Sorry if I'm blocking you here. The schematic design contains a very important construction cost estimate and total project budget summary form, which ultimately becomes the town's funding agreement with the MSBA. So the, ultimately, the total project costs shown here is fifty-two million dollars. Why am I pointing with a pen when I have this? So last month, December, we had a MSBA Board of Directors meeting, and they unanimously voted to approve the project scope and budget after a few heavily reviewed meetings and submittals. So that's great, but we're also almost a full year away from bidding, so the budget contains a heavy amount of design contingency, construction cost escalation to get us to that point. Things obviously become more expensive over time. So the slide shows here that we're carrying almost seven point six million dollars' worth of contingencies. Steve, if you could go to the next slide. So then the question that had already been asked, and really, everyone asked, is, what's it gonna cost the Town of Danvers? I really need to emphasize, so the MSBA grant program provides reimbursement for a percentage of eligible project costs. So two words you're gonna hear me say over and over again are percentage and eligible costs. There's also cost caps that are important that we keep in mind and we try to avoid. So one is, for an example, the MSBA will only participate in up to twenty-four hundred dollars per student for furniture and equipment and technology. So that's just an example, one of the many cost caps. Danvers reimbursement rate is fifty-five point four-six percent. You see that up there in the top right corner, that table? So again, fifty-five point four-six percent of eligible project costs. This includes four point eight-eight incentive points. We got two for committing to a green design, it's gonna be Mass ChIP certified, one point eight-eight points for Danvers' exceptional maintenance practices out of a total of two. This is basically the MSBA acknowledging that they're putting their money to a good use, and that Danvers is gonna take care of the school. And then, we actually got grandfathered in for the last point, which was the CM@Risk incentive point, which I'll actually touch on in a little bit. So someone who's unfamiliar with the MSBA process might understandably think, okay, we have a fifty-two million dollar total project costs, we have a fifty-five point four-six percent reimbursement rate, our grant should be twenty-eight point eight million dollars. But unfortunately, due to the cost caps, ineligible caps, ineligible costs, excuse me, that's not the case. So our grant is actually reduced by over eight million dollars, and Steve and Jen did a nice job putting together this table on the left side summarizing that. So you'll see, really, the big one is the MSBA cap that they'll reimburse up to three hundred and thirty-three dollars per square foot, times your reimbursement rate. You'll see that costs us about six and a quarter million dollars off of the grant. Something I'd like to point out, the table in the bottom right corner, it shows the MSBA average costs versus the cap. You'll see currently, three thirty-three. Twenty-ten is on there, that's not a mistake, that's when the high school project happened. You'll see the MSBA was reimbursing at two hundred and seventy-five dollars per square foot, and the average cost was two hundred and seventy-five dollars per square foot. So you'll see nowadays, there's about a hundred and seventy-six dollar per square foot discrepancy there. Obviously, every project has a different, different factors that determine that, you know. One of the, one of the, one of the projects on that chart is on Nantucket, so we try to not incorporate that, but things to keep in mind. So our project budget really fits right in with the average of what we're seeing on MSBA projects, and I'd like to really point out that we have a great school design, as Charlie showed. We have all of the wants-to-haves and the needs-to-haves incorporated at this point. We only have a hundred and eighty-eight square feet of ineligible space, and that's for a second teacher planning room. So Charlie showed you there was the two levels of academic wings, and we now have a teacher planning room on both levels. Just out of fairness, the MSBA wouldn't participate in it. They have no issue with it. They totally understand why we have it. So big thank you to everyone involved. Kudos to everyone. You've done a great job. It's been awesome to work with you. And I've mentioned briefly, oh, and I should talk about the numbers. So the effective MSBA grant brings us to $20 million, $20.49, leaving Danvers with a share of $31.5 million roughly. That assumes every single contingency dollar is spent, so please keep that in mind. You also need to spend it to get reimbursed on it. So if we don't spend the whole $52 million, you're not getting the whole $20.49 million. Just things to keep in mind. Finally, I'd like to touch on briefly utilization of the construction manager at-risk method. Kind of mentioned it a couple of times. We recently hired WT Rich as our CMR for the project. I could go on, and Kevin could probably go on twice as long, but for an hour or so about CMR versus the traditional design bid-build and why it's good and why it's best for this project, I'll spare you all that. But basically, what it allowed us to do is hire someone for pre-construction services. They're going to be with us the whole next nine, 10 months before construction starts. They'll have their input. They're doing independent construction cost estimates, and it's better than, it's better than our cost estimates that we've had to date because at the end of the day, they need to build it. They're looking at constructibility, save money, save time. They're looking at logistics, save money, save time, also increase safety for students on an occupied site. Other than that, it allows us for use of early construction packages so we can get the site work going before the documents that are at 100% bittable level. In the northeast area of the country, you know, the winter is tough in schedule sequencing, so any kind of jump you can get on work, get us enclosed, work can happen inside of that during the winter. It's huge cost savings-wise. And then finally, we'll get more bids from people who want to work with WT Rich as opposed to the, kind of a forced marriage of the lowest qualified bidder for traditional design bid-build. At this point, I'm going to stop going on and on about that and hand it back over to Steve, who's going to discuss the next steps. Thank you all.
Let me just, I'll just get through this real quickly, and then I think I'll suggest that we have more that's in the warrant than what we just saw, but you may want to, I don't know if you want to talk about design before we switch over to some of the others.
At the end of this, we'll do.
Sure. Okay. So we've already, in fact, we've already talked about all the things on this slide, which is really looking ahead at the schedule to get us from where we sit today, again, through an open, functioning school if town meeting supports the project. So there's more in the warrant itself than what we just presented, which I can speak to, but I'll defer to the chair if he wants to hear that first or take some questions on what we just.
So I'd like to speak while the presentation's fresh in our minds. I'd like to offer questions, but before I do, I'd ask Dr. Dana, is there anything you'd like to speak to from the school's perspective? I don't want to put you on the spot. I just want to give you the opportunity.
We're all set. It's collaborative process, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. So at this point, I'm going to open up to the board about the presentation, then I'll open it up to the public about the presentation, then we'll go through the rest of the warrant that wasn't expressed in the presentation, and we'll come back. So at this point, board members, I'll start with you, Dan. Do you have questions about the presentation?
I do. Perhaps if we go back to that slide with the percentages of the reimbursement.
Now I've done it.
Because I don't think that was in a.
It was not.
In written material.
It was an exhibit. It should be an exhibit.
Is that an exhibit?
It should be.
The second, I noted the same thing, Dan, that you did. You gave us this grid of brown, but not the other side ones.
They're black and white in the narrative.
That's okay. All right. So, but this is fine. Page 11, then. If everybody turn to page 11 on the bottom. The, thank you. So I just want a little clarification on the effective MSBA funding grant, which is shown as $20,488,663. You made the comment, if we don't spend 52, that number decreases if we don't use up all the contingencies?
That's correct.
So can you elaborate?
So the MSBA, it's kind of a pay-as-you-go system. It's called PRO Pay, which is progress payment. So on a monthly basis, when we pay out, it'll be WT Rich, construction manager at risk. The next month, we can submit reimbursement requests. So basically, if you don't spend it, you don't get reimbursed on it. Does that make sense?
It does, but is there a number you can kind of share with us if we don't, if we save 5% of the 52? Are we going to lose 5% of the 20?
Depends which dollars we don't spend. So if we don't spend, for example, we're at the construction contingency above the 1% cap. We have a lot of money other than that, other than just 1%. So that's a direct savings. But if you don't spend something that they would have reimbursed, then the numbers shift a little bit.
Can I try to answer?
Yeah, what I'm trying to figure out is if, is there, does it go against us not to spend the money?
No, I think what, so the two figures that you see at the bottom of the screen there, the 20.48 million and the 31.5, because, because all but 188 square feet of this project have been deemed eligible for reimbursement by the MSBA, if the bids come in low and if the CM can identify some project savings and the project ends up being a $49 million project instead of a 52, then both the 20.49 and the 31.5 would rise or fall together. So the town's portion would go down and the MSBA would be reimbursing on a, on a less expensive project.
We'd be spending 45% less.
We would be spending less, as would the.
Right, we'd be spending less, and, but we wouldn't be penalized from the MSBA or just dropped by that same percentage?
Yeah, they would, they should rise or fall together based on the actual.
Assuming that they were going to pay you for that, yes.
No, I understand. It's only on the reimbursable pieces of what we spend. Okay. So if one number, if the total cost goes down, that's a good thing.
Absolutely.
And the MSBA, their costs, their payment cost goes down equally.
Right. I just wanted to emphasize, you know, the 20.49 isn't 100%.
No, I understand.
Okay.
I mean, you're doing some educated guessing.
That's the maximum that the MSBA will participate in.
Anyways.
If every dollar is spent, right.
All right. Thank you. Just want to make that more clear. Thank you.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Diane? I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, I went the wrong way. Bill, please.
I'm all set because I'm on the committee and I've listened to these presentations and asked my questions already.
Slack Millz, do you have questions on the presentation, sir?
No, but I comment that it seems, if I understand it, and I think I do, it's a pretty good presentation.
Thank you. Diane?
Yeah, I'm all set too, but I just don't want people to get confused about what Dan just said. I'd be really happy if the reimbursement grant went down. That means the town's portion goes down too. That just means we got better prices. So I'm, that's.
Well, I understand. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, I just don't want people to be confused and thinking like, you know, and then we hope that the ineligible's go down too. But that's a good thing as it goes down. It means the project, the taxpayer portion goes down. I'm all set otherwise. Thank you.
To whomever. Some of it's going to be town manager, some of it may be the professionals in the room who do this over and over. The contingencies, I kind of feel, I know the answer, but I want it expressed in public so that people are comfortable with it as well. This contingency, what was the contingencies for the previous projects we had in percentage-wise, would you say? Does this fall in line with those?
It does, and I think, I'll go back, actually, well, make sure I go the right way.
Contingencies would more like, ten, maybe.
Well, dollars and, I'm asking if you had that opportunity to look at that, Mr. Town Manager.
So, yeah, I would, I would let Joe and Kevin speak to the contingency sort of generally as a percent of the project.
As an industry standard, yeah.
Comparing one particular project to this, to the next may not be as helpful as looking at sort of generally the theory behind the escalation numbers and the specific contingencies.
Yeah, I wasn't looking for the number, the dollar amount, because what I was looking for is the percentage of the project. What is the industry standard, and do we fall in line with the industry standard for contingencies?
Go ahead.
You walked, you walked up like you wanted it.
I heard you. I heard you. You just want to get on TV. If you sit right here, you'll be on TV all the time.
So like I mentioned, we're very early in the project phase. So some of these contingencies that we have in the budget are going to work their way up into the construction line items, particularly escalation. And that's the nature of it, especially design contingencies as well. It's the contingency for your design evolving over time, and as it does, the design contingency goes down and the construction cost line items go up. We, what we do at PMA in-house, and it's actually one of my favorite tasks that we do, because we get six of us in a room together, and we go over these compared to all of our projects, lesson learns. Where could we bump up this line item? Where could we tweak down this line item? And we found that it's in, very much so in accordance with our other projects that we've had success with.
Okay, because I just saw a rough calculation, which is roughly 14%. And the idea is that we're making guesses. Our best educated guesses, steel costs this much today. Steel a year from now, we put in a contingency because it may go up. It go down, don't know, you're not sure, but you put the contingency in there for the fact that steel's going to go up, concrete's going to go up, the wiring's going to go up, construction and labor costs are going to go up, the bids are going to potentially go up. That's not a solid, you don't know what you'd get a bid today, but you presume and then you hope that it doesn't.
It's really amazing, the amount of research that these independent construction cost estimators do. They look at each building element and how those prices change over time, over like 10, 15-plus years, and the labor associated with each element. And it could really make your head spin to really think about it, but it's amazing the amount of work that they put in to do exactly what you're talking about.
Sure.
If I could, sir, just to, to the strict answering of the question, at this point in schematic design, moving into design development, we are carrying industry-standard contingencies, not just industry-standard for this construction-type-a-school, but it's also in line with what the MSBA negotiates with us on this, on this total budget. So right now, we're carrying an appropriate design contingency. We're carrying a construction contingency that'll take us to the midpoint of construction. Not today's dollars, as Joe said. It's projected into midpoint of when our project will be constructed. And then we rely on the third-party estimators. One's on the, one for the architect, it's off in his corner. One for the town through PMA in his corner. We get together, they reconcile. Now we add that third great piece, is the construction manager at risk, the person, the firm that actually has to build the project, will interject their estimate, their escalation, and their experience in the current market and their projection to the midpoint of construction. So this will continue through the design phases. We're only at schematic design. We'll have another estimate at design development, that's about 60%, and then 90% construction documents. So we'll continue to analyze the design contingency and see that it's brought down in a proper curve as we get closer to our construction bid date.
Great, thank you. Did questions from board members? Are we all set?
I'm all set.
Is there members of the audience who'd like to speak to the, to the presentation, sir? You were first. If you could introduce yourself to.
Sure. Sure. Alan McHarrison, precinct seven. I've got a few questions. If we could go, Mr. Batha, to.
I think I'm going the right direction this time.
Number 13.
Okay.
So we're talking about the old layout and the new layout and dumpsters. And my question is, obviously, we, in the old view, you've got a truck going in, picking up the dumpster, and then coming up the same way. You've got room to turn around. In, in the new drawing, you've got a pathway going to the dumpster. My just curiosity is, it seems like it's a one-way-in, and we're talking about the safety around the playground. I don't think it matters whether it's a front-load dumpster or a back-load dumpster truck, but how is that truck, is that truck going to back out the same way that it drove in?
The intent is that the truck is going to go.
If you could go to the microphone so that people who might, will be watching this on TV, and you'd be amazed how many do.
Trying to resist, not slow down the logistics of this. The intent is that the vehicle will, yeah? The vehicle will go in and out the same way. So whether it is a front-load truck or a rear-load truck, it currently is rear, I think, it's going to basically come back in and then leave again, which will be the same thing for deliveries. So this is a short run for a vehicle to back in or go in forward and back out. And the, the, the turning radiuses have all been, you know, vetted around the largest truck that we would expect to see on the site. I don't know if you've had a chance to drive a semi, but you've got blind spots. I'm familiar with this. So I'm concerned. I'm just concerned. And one would think that there would be a turnaround, a small turnaround in that area so that it could come back out. No matter which way you go in this design, I'm just concerned that you've got a blind spot going in but not coming out, whether you're backing in or driving out. I'm just raising a concern. We don't need answers. I'm just raising a concern. You might find that a trash truck, and I experienced this at my company, they will find a path to make their application easier for them. So you might find them zigzagging through that property to get to that destination. Enough said, just an awareness. My next one would be, and I'm not sure what sign, I mean, I'm sorry, page the next one was on, but we described the classroom and the split level going to second floor, first floor. And I noticed stairs. I think it was the last 15, or there, that's the 15 or 16. I think 15 shows it in three, three-dimensional. So you've got the two stairs, yes? I'm thinking of handicap access. Is there any areas for handicap access?
Yes.
Or could you just provide a ramp network?
Steve, could we just flip to the plan? Sorry there. So when you arrive at these stairs, there's an elevator right there.
Okay.
So elevator goes down a half a flight, or the elevator goes up half a flight. So a student is either going up a half a flight, their friend may get in the elevator and go up the same half a flight, they arrive at the same place.
And fire egress would be whatever floor.
Egress is, yeah, egress is, so for the second floor, you go out those stairs or those stairs or those stairs. So there's three different sets of stairs.
Is there a ramp access for, let's say, a handicapped child on the second floor or a handicapped person on the second floor to egress without going up and downstairs if they're in a wheelchair?
No. There is no way of ramping the building from the second floor. So in the case of an emergency, they are using a elevator or they're using a place of refuge in the stair and waiting for, which.
Elevator, I believe, or not.
Right. So which is why the code accommodates this by having an area of refuge within the stairs that somebody can wait for the arrival of help.
I think Keith Taverne would like to address the board as well.
I can just add, working with our fire department, we have this in our middle school and our high school, so they'll provide us with kits that we'll have stationed at the exits that are chairs that are meant for either teachers that are trained to help facilitate with students or for firefighters when they arrive to have chairs that are meant to carry students up and down for that egress.
Yep. I'm just raising awareness.
Yeah, nope, and I'm just, so we do those in place, not fire.
And on page 17, it was illustrated for the STEM area. And I was just wondering about the technology in there, and I think it's a spelling error on that too. It looks like STEAM.
Arts.
Okay. But, what was that?
STEAM is arts as well.
Arts, arts as well. Okay.
Arts.
Arts. Okay, got it. Thanks. What kind of technologies are going into that at an elementary school level? It's just an open-ended question. I'm not sure. I know that the high school has it, and the segments of the middle school, but I was just wondering what K-5 offers for that.
So we actually have a planning meeting just for this space this upcoming Friday so we can really dig into what technology we want in the space. We just adopted a new science curriculum that's called Amplify that really brings a lot of these concepts to life, to really have it hands-on, and turns kids into pinball engineers and all these different things. So that's what we're going to talk about, is what level of technology we want in the room, and then how does that fit into our budget that we have at the $2,400 per student? So it's kind of early in the process. So it's kind of early in the process to know that. It's going to be built for ultimate flexibility. And then the ideas that we do design here, we're going to roll out to our other elementary schools as we look to do a combination of learning commons, maker space, and STEM and STEAM spaces that we roll out to the other four schools.
Excellent. And just one more thing, I, financial, under the, I was just, everybody's talking about percentages. I know Mr. Trask was talking about, you know, if things go up, if things go down, and so forth. And one of the, I think it's right here, yes, the middle section construction costs, the site costs and demolition costs fixed, I would think that they would be, as most of the materials are just being removed, there's no cost, you know, the steel cost is there, you know, it's not like building something where something can go up and down. It's excavators and so forth, just removing product, the old school. Is that a fixed cost?
Oh, great. So it is, it is not, because those are trades that are bid, and they're also subject to market forces, how busy they are, how many jobs are on the street, our disposal materials, does it cost more to get rid of asbestos? But again, we've included that in our escalated cost to the midpoint of construction. We properly escalated both demolition and abatement. We don't know exactly, we know what asbestos abatement costs now, we can project it into the end of the year, but we've taken our estimators' advice and applied, I believe it's 5% to the midpoint of construction. And again, unfortunately, we have to bid it out to the demolition world competitively bid, and it's what it's worth on that day that we bid it. So we do include cost escalation.
May, sorry. So you just mentioned asbestos. Just a question.
Could you get closer to the mic, just in case? Thank you.
Yep, asbestos, he mentioned it. Is it in the building? Do we know if it is?
Seventy's building.
So David Lane is not here tonight. I would, I think Joe or Charlie could probably partially address it. A significant amount of abatement has already been done in the building.
Yep.
But there may be more, and Charlie's nodding along, so we, that's a known...
Yeah, I should have more appropriately said hazardous materials.
Hazardous materials.
Of which one could be asbestos. The town is required to have, and they do have, I know through your building department, a catalog and an accounting of what hazards exist in all the town buildings.
Agreed. But I would think, being a building that was built in 1973, the town should probably have an original build of materials for the facility to know what materials actually went into the building originally. Anyway.
Charlie, you can answer if you like. I think that, my knowledge of it, having been in building maintenance, is I believe the tag far through the state is AHERA, A-H-E-R-A, AHERA Plan, which is, needs to be updated for every public building every two years, which does catalog all the hazards within the school. And I know that your building department has provided it to our design team.
And, so as part of the project, too, there has been a consultant who's come in and inspected the entire school, taken some, physical samples, lab-tested them, and there's a very detailed report that has all of the materials which are hazardous materials and an estimated cost to remove those. So those would be removed as part of the demolition process, they're actually removed in advance of the building coming down. So that actually is in the budget for the project and has actually been completed as part of the project process.
Thank you. Any more questions, sir?
I think I'm done.
Thank you. Before I invite the next person up, I should have mentioned a couple of things. We may not have your answers tonight. Certainly, you might come up with something, we may not have the answer right at the tips of our fingers or in a, in a graph, but we have opportunities to get those answers before you. We have, as you know, the next step in the process will be FinCom, if the selectmen move this on, they probably won't be answered at that point, it's only a couple of days away. But we have a scheduled Saturday workshop on 1/26, from 9:00 to 12:00, to discuss this warrant article, to discuss the details of the building, some of the things Mr. Taverne brought up tonight when you asked about some of the technologies that would be coming along. We'll have that further fleshed out, we'll bring back those kind of answers. So you'll pardon us of some of these, we defer until that point in time, and then we'll hope to get all your answers out at that, at that, at that meeting, at that workshop. I also want to say now that we understand fully, completely, the elephant in the room of funding this project. Tonight is the warrant article about the project itself, what the project is comprised of, what the size is, what we're going to do with it, what we hope to ask the town meeting to appropriate for the potential of borrowing. Funding is certainly a component of that, but we're, but we're going to focus on the funding, not completely separately, but we also understand that that's a very important portion of this. We're going to have a special workshop on that on February 11th, Monday, February 11th. I've asked the town manager to, to, to extend an invitation, anybody who wants to come and talk specifically about the funding of the project. What is the best model, what is the best way to do it? And best is relative, it's, as it always is, but what is the most amenable manner of doing it? So we are going to talk definitely about costs, we are definitely going to talk about funding at some point, at a point in this. The warrant tonight and the discussion tonight is primarily focused, and I'm not omitting the discussion, but I'm saying primarily focused on the project as developed and presented to date. So, so with that, I just want people to know that we have opportunities, if you don't get your answer tonight, we have two more workshops coming up. One about the warrant article on the 20th, on the 26th, one about the funding on February 11th. So back to asking, is there anybody else in the audience?
February 11th.
February 11th. Yes, February 11th.
Town meeting is on February 4th.
The town meeting is about the warrant article. It's not about the fund. It'll be after the town meeting. So if there's people who have questions about the presentation, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Duggan, town meeting member precinct one. Just some clarification, so Article 2 on the warrant specifically says the appropriation and the funding of the project.
Mm-hmm.
So I think at that point, you're already committed to the school, so...
I believe you're correct. That would be, are we going to do a school project?
Are we going to pay for it?
Which is different than how we're going to pay for it.
Well, that's the question, right, is how, when do we determine this, on the February 4th, the town meeting is voting to spend the money?
Mm-hmm.
So that's not really clear on how that funding is going to appear.
So the fund, this project will be funded if the town meeting agrees with the plan that's being presented, that it will, that they're willing to accept the cost of this project, that is how much it's going to cost. The question on how we are going to then pay for that cost, 20 years, 30 years, how we're going to do it, is how we're going to pay for the cost that we've accepted as a necessity. They're not, it's not, they're symbiotic, it's not one, there's no causation between the two. It's not if we pay for it in a certain way, the cost is X. It's, the cost is X, then how will we pay for it?
So how are, when's that determination made?
As I said, we're going to have, so that determination is made, we're going to have a workshop on that on 2/11. We're going to, we're going to have discussions on the selectmen's agenda every meeting through this. We're going to have discussions we've asked already previously in meetings, does anybody have questions, does anybody have ideas, some of the selectmen have offered thoughts and ideas? Can we do this, can we do that? We invite the public to do the same, and then on a workshop on 2/11, we'll coalesce all of those thoughts, questions, considerations, and, and present different opportunities. After that, the selectmen will decide if there is a necessity for referendum, if we're going, which direction we're going in, and that we're going to guide the town towards.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Would you plan to decide, the board of selectmen decide on our meeting of the 19th?
Correct. So, so the schedule is as follows, allow me. Tonight, we're meeting, obviously, to talk about the warrant, the project itself and the cost of the project. On 1/15, FinCom will have the same consideration, what is the project and what is it going to cost, and what are all the components of that? On 1/22, there's a selectmen's meeting. We will have some further discussion about financing, we'll entertain questions, we'll take any input from the, from the citizens, and we will pass it on to the town manager or the appropriate town departments to get the answers that you seek. Certain selectmen have asked questions about reducing some funding here, escalating some certain things there, other parts of the budget. Then we have 1/26, is the, is the Saturday workshop on the warrant. What is the project going to cost, what does it consist of? 2/4, we have the special meeting to decide on the warrant. On 2/5, we have a selectmen's meeting, and then on 2/11, we have a workshop to talk about the funding. Again, how we fund it doesn't affect the cost or the project itself. We are, it's not, it's, there's no correlation between the two, other than it's a one-way correlation. What we decide to do with the warrant and the money we spend for the school will then have to be funded, and we will have to determine the appropriate funding model for that.
Well, that's, that's the issue, right? So we're going to, on, on February 4th, let's assume that town meeting approves the...
Yep.
This presentation to build the school.
Correct.
But they don't want, the funding mechanism is not agreeable to town meeting.
We're not presenting a funding mechanism on the 4th.
No, I realize that, but at some point down the road, you need to spend the money, and then...
Yep.
That's the issue, right? So the school looks like a beautiful thing, but how, how we're going to pay for it, or if we have the revenue to cover the cost, that's, when does that happen?
So the question of if we have the revenue, we have the revenue, we have the ability to, to do this. We will, we will be able, presuming that this passes and the project passes for the, for the price tag, and that's, the, the town body authorizes us the authority to borrow up to $31,500 or whatever the number is up there. That's the cost of the project. We will then determine how to fund it. We could fund it in a 30-year model, a 20-year remodel, something in between, and we can do it in the 30-year model.
I understand, but when is that going to happen?
Because... As I said, we're going to have a special meeting on 2/11, a workshop to talk about it. And on 2/19, the selectmen will...
I'm not going to, I'm not going to approve something without knowing how it's going to be paid for, right? So does that happen at the Maytown meeting, or does, when, I'm missing something here.
You are, you are ascribing the payment method to the project.
Yeah, that's, that's the most important part of the whole project, is how we're going to pay for it.
We're going to pay...
We will pay for it, no matter what. Okay, all right.
I have a very similar reservation that Matt just described, and some of you people were involved in overrides with the middle school, and you saw how you got beaten down. Bill and I were around when we had two schools approved for the town by town meeting, and because of various factors, they were voted down, and we're left now with the remnants, 45 years later, of the Smith School that was a poorly planned project from the beginning. I think it's intricately tied into the financing of the building. I've talked to a lot of people in this town, and if we don't tie down or put in place what the process is for the payment of this, we're going to lose a lot of support. And you may not get this, the school passed on the 4th at special town meeting if there's not a funding mechanism or methodology already in place. And I think it's premature to assume that after the fact, we're going to figure out how to pay for it. We've got to figure out how to pay for it before we vote it at the town's special town meeting, and it's not, I, I don't think it's going to pass if, in fact, this very fact that what Matt was talking about comes up at the meeting. People are going to say, they're going to get cold feet and say, hey, I want to know how we're going to pay for this, are we going to pay for, you know, and we know the options, we've gone over the options before of the payment, but I think that's going to be a very critical argument, and is one, and is the same argument as the school itself. And I don't want to see us go through this method, get a building all ready to go, and then have it rejected by the people, the townspeople, after the town meeting has approved it. I don't think it's going to pass without having the financial package tied in with the construction package.
Thank you. Were you next? Please, go ahead. About the presentation first?
John Zavilla, town meeting member precinct four. You have a workshop on January 26th and one scheduled for February 11th. Why can't you have both on January 26th? Half the meeting is about the project and half is about the funding, because Mr. Clark is right. I'm all for this, but are we doing a 20-year bond, 30-year bond, it's going to be something else? And I agree with Mr. Duggan. And Bill, I, I just think, you have that workshop on the 26th, covers the funding and the project. You killed two birds with one stone, now you go to the meeting the next week, people's questions are answered about the funding. Thank you.
May I say something? Thank you. So it's, it's a mistake we make over and over and over again in this town. Right now, you've got a project, and it's set that we can handle it 30 years within budget. So it's not like we don't have a finance plan here, we do. You are hearing stories about other alternatives. Excuse me, I too have a call. You cannot get that done by February 4th, and this is the thing we do over and over in this town. We push projects off, so we spend more money. The rates are going up. So right now, if we even lose the 30-year, it's going to cost us more out-of-pocket Let's get this, we're right now doing the project. This has been going on for years. We can do it within the 30 years. If somebody wants to go forward and try to find a way to save us out-of-pocket dollars from the town, so be it. If they say no, we're going to pay it over 30 years. But please don't think that pushing this project off is a smart idea. Lessons have been learned, I'm getting tired of spending more money because somebody thinks we don't have it. We have been planning, we have funds, we've done our job, we can do this in 30 years. Do I agree with it? I don't know. I'm going to go back then after for the funding, but we can get the project moving. We have already had appropriations through town meeting to move this forward. And if you think cost isn't going up, you're not watching the news. So please, we, again, you're asking us to stop something that a lot of planning, this has been being talked about for years. The plan is first. We can spend it over 30 years. Don't, I'm not, I'm not, I don't like hearing that we don't have a plan, we do. There might be a better funding plan later, but we can do it in 30 years. So I think we should get back to the program, the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nicholson, please. Mr. Ryan, you'll be next.
I was on the committee for the Holton Richmond, I was on the committee for the I have two questions. Well, one of them actually is a piece of advice. I've been around a long time, and I know how people think. If you're going to try a dead exclusion, it's not going to work. There are too many people that don't understand it, even though it's the best way to do it, but it won't pass. So I would suggest, as a town meeting member, that you consider just doing the 30-year plan, eating the $14 to $18 million. That way, it won't be a referendum vote. That's one of my recommendations to you. My other question is, is it a majority or a two-thirds vote?
For the selectmen to send us a referendum?
No.
Town meeting, two-thirds.
It's two-thirds, which is very difficult to get. If you could emphasize on your 26th meeting, as a board, that you are going to finance this for 30 years.
Excuse me.
Budget it. The issue then would be over and done, what town meeting would know, and they would support it on town meeting for, on the 4th of February. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Mr. Ryan, you had your hand up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bob Ryan, precinct seven. I also had the pleasure of serving with Bill on the Holton Richmond School, and it can almost, the questions being asked keep skirting the real issue, so let us, let us put an end to the... to the discussion. Is the Board of Selectmen saying that a debt exclusion is off the table?
Say that again, please. Bob, what did you say?
Is this working?
It is. If you could just...
Okay. I, I'm sorry. I'm asking, is the Board of Selectmen saying that a debt exclusion is off the table? We've indicated we have revenue. All of that means nothing to an awful lot of people. What's revenue? Debt exclusion could be, is revenue. Let's, let's just get to the stumbling block right here. It's very simple. Is that what we're saying?
So, I'll answer for myself, and then the other selectman can weigh in on the, on this. The selectmen have not made that decision. Pro, con, yes, no, they haven't made a decision on that. What we have before us is a project that's going to cost a certain amount of money. Let me finish. And we are looking at the different models of paying for that. We can go thirty years, and that would be the easiest thing for, for me to do. Go thirty years. Don't discuss debt exclusion, don't, don't worry about it. Thirty years, bang, just like all the other projects. Level funded, out there. But I'm also presented with options that allow us to save fourteen million dollars of taxpayers' money, that if, at that workshop, and you've heard obviously previously, two dollars a month on your average bill, we'll cut this thing down by ten years and save fourteen million dollars. So, the question I have is, what is the most prudent thing to do for the taxpayer? Go thirty years, or suggest going twenty years and offering them that opportunity? The selectmen will not decide the financing. If this goes to referendum, this is a town decision, not a town meeting's decision, an entire town decision. So, the question is, which serves the taxpayers better? And it's subjective, and you may have a different better than I have a different better, but which serves the taxpayers better to spend twenty, twenty-two dollars more a year for twenty years, roughly a dollar eighty-five a, a month, and cut ten years right off that? Who, if any of us had the opportunity to do so with their mortgage and could afford to do so, would do so? So, I'm not suggesting, and we're not being proponents of one or the other. We're saying, this will be funded. If the bare minimum happens, if nothing else happens, it'll be a thirty-year funding mechanism. That comes with costs, and we wanted to evaluate the costs, and we wanted to put it potentially before the town, entire town, to make the decision about what they perceive as better. But the project will be funded. Now, the question is, how are you going to fund it? And I appreciate that there's close ties to this. I was in the same history you guys were all in, but I'm also looking at the fact that there is options, and should we not at least look at the options, consider the options, and let the town body decide on the options? Town body as a whole. So, the selectmen have not said yes, no, up or down on, on the question of referendum, on the question of, of a debt exclusion.
It's clear from the comments made and the questions asked, and Bill has already alluded to it. The elephant in the room is clear. Debt exclusion. We went through this with the middle school, that he said we had to tear it down, throw it away, build new. I'm, I'm, I had shutters when I was listening to new construction, old construction. Certainly seems to be, for this particular project, the proper way to go is just get rid of it and move on. So, I don't have any questions about that. But the middle school, it did, and it was going to be debt exclusion all the way down the line, and that killed it, and we finally ended up doing it, and we did do it within the budget, and there's no question. For the people sitting in this room, they all have to sit there and see how many Benjamins they have, and that tells them how much they can borrow. Here in this room, we say, let's have a project, and then we'll figure out the Benjamins later. That's the difficulty people are having, and so, there's a natural progression for people to want to say, oops, I guess this means a debt exclusion, and Bill has already given you that warning, so I need not give you that again. Thank you for your time.
You did ask a question.
And clarification, clarification on the project approval. What is the, is it fifty percent for the approval of the project?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds. Because it's an appropriation. It's an appropriation.
Other selectmen, did you want to weigh in on the question Mr. Ryan asked?
I didn't think that was a question.
Well, he did ask it, the selectmen were committed to a debt exclusion.
No.
All right. Are there any questions on, yes, sir? Yes, please, to the podium.
Jack Parker, town meeting member, precinct four. First of all, thank you guys for this presentation. That was very well done. Thank you for putting everything together here. It's been very interesting to have all the questions answered, even though you don't think that you've been able to answer the questions. So, I have two stupid questions to ask. One is, if the price tag goes up to sixty-two million, for example, does MSBA go along for the ride, or are we there?
Mr. Town Manager?
So, no. The short answer is no, and that's why if you turn, as, as Kevin and Joe indicated, the reason, the reason we have a fourteen percent contingency right now is to make sure that doesn't happen, because at this, you, you want to be conservative now because you're locking in what the MSBA's ultimate reimbursement is going to be.
And, and I like that they did that. I think it's very, very useful. Second question, how many classrooms are there?
Where's Charlie?
This is, this is twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Cave through five classrooms.
Okay.
Then there's specialty classrooms throughout the building.
So, that's twenty, class size twenty, roughly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that was the goal. Eighteen to twenty-two is our, our goal that we tried to on a given year.
That was it, thank you.
Mr. Town Manager, I'm not sure if he understands that when we go to town meeting and we ask for fifty-two, they came back at sixty-two. I'm not sure he understands we'd have to go back again. I think, was that your question? What happens if it comes in higher?
Only if MSBA would go along with us.
Okay, so, we also can't do it. I think that...
So, the second, yeah, that's right. MSBA is committed to the twenty-point-four-nine million dollars. If the project required an additional ten million dollar appropriation to complete the project as presented, that would be a subsequent town meeting vote. So, there's no, there is an authorization to spend that money.
Right.
That's a great point.
Any more questions, please, Mr. Bates?
Bill Bates, town meeting member, precinct four and fourteen LeBeau Drive. This is in my neighborhood. I'm concerned, and, and I would just ask that the Board of Selectmen, please reconsider the conversations after the fact. As a twenty-two-year town meeting member, I don't, I can't picture myself being able to vote yea or nay on a project that I don't know exactly how you're going to pay for it. And, and I, I just don't, we need the Smith School. The Smith School needs this project. This is a good project. There's been years invested in this, but I, I'm very concerned that if we don't have the, the answers, I agree with Mr. Savalia, maybe we could do something with the, the January 26th meeting, splitting it up, but at least have, as our Board of, as our leaders, the Board of Selectmen, that this is how you propose to pay for it as we stand there on February 4th. And then, if something comes up afterwards, if people want to interject and say, yeah, we could save some money by shortening the term, those will be all new meetings, and we'll, that, that'll be a whole new slate of questions to answer. But please, as a town meeting member, bring me a project with a price tag and a clear direction of how you expect to pay for it that evening. And I, I don't think that's asking for too much.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Just to be clear, Bill, you prefer the Board to commit to the thirty-year funding and go to town meeting and get approval, but if after the fact, we decide to send it to the voters for debt exclusion, you'd be okay with that?
Absolutely. Absolutely. If, if there's, that's a whole new vote, but I need on February 4th to know...
Kind of disingenuous for us to say, yeah, thirty, and then two weeks later say, we're going to go for a debt exclusion.
Well, then, then it's, it's, but it's disingenuous through you, Mr. Chairman, if you're also going to say to us, we think we're going to pay for it in thirty years, but maybe we'll do twenty, because we're not going to support it on town meeting floor with that kind of ambiguity in there. I really think you need to rethink this. The funding, you've got to make a commitment.
So, it's a process, and we are thinking, we're getting everybody's input.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Mr....
I'm very impressed with the town meeting members that spoke tonight and their insight and their feelings about this issue. Bill Nicholson and I couldn't agree more, a hundred percent, and there's a reason for that. We've been, been there and done that. No one else in this room has been there with two referendums overriding an approved school. That was a tumultuous situation for the town, and it took us forty-five years to hopefully kind of rectify the problems that were made then. Don't take that lightly. I know, Diane, you may be opposed to me in this, but you know firsthand what effect it had with your stepfather, because he worked so hard for that high school, and it just destroyed him philosophically to be put down like that by the people in this town. And I see the same arguments here that I saw forty-six, seven years ago with the high schools that we tried to build on Hobart Street. We bought the land, we had the plans all done, and I remember those plans going down a chute to a coal truck going to North Shore Recycling, and someone got a half-million-dollar insulation job out of it. It's, I, you've got to, you've got to not have the, you've got to go to a commitment for the funding, or it's not going to pass town meeting. You need two-thirds vote. You've already got six or seven right here now that have said that to you, and they're just the ones that are at this meeting, and they're all very reputable town meeting members.
So, first off, I would hope that by now I would have the respect that I would never send anything without how to, how to pay for it. We do have something, so maybe we'd have to come up with some language that our legal counsel would accept. We, we do have a plan. We have some stabilization. The problem is, if we send it out level funded, like the mistake we have with the high school funding, then we lose fourteen million. If that is the choice, I'm fine with it. We're set to go. There is funding, there's been a plan. The town manager's job is to make sure, and we've been doing this for years. I would never send something we couldn't pay for. The difference is, this time, we can pay for it, then we couldn't. Everything was if we, if, only if we get an override. That's not what we're saying to you. So, this is very important. That's why I'm a little confused. There is a system. We have a system. If there's a legal way to write it, fine. Do I agree with it? No. Will I later say, I want to save fourteen million dollars? I'm a little bit cheap. I would like to save fourteen million dollars if there's a way. If everybody disagrees with me, it doesn't matter. Smith School goes forward, and we pay for it over thirty years. So, Bill, I am on the same page with you. I am on the same page with you. I, I wouldn't want this town manager, if there wasn't a plan, you don't send fifty-two million dollar cost out and then say, boy, I hope, you know, throw it in the wind, and you know what they say about that. So, I, I'm, I'm, I don't know how to explain this, that there is a system. I don't know if we need some legal, I, I never pretend to know the legal jargon because I'm not as smart as them, but, but I, we can pay for it, and so, that's why first, we need to move this school along. Those, those are the mistakes we made before. We kept letting everything cost more and more and more, and we chased our tails. And I'm really a little upset with the amount of extra money, and if you don't believe me, maybe someday we can sit down, we can show you some charts, but we've paid for that, high school, middle school, over and over again, and now you want to push the Smith School off, knowing that we need that space? Well, this is a better plan than that. We learned from that. This is smarter. We have it in place. We can afford it. It's going to be tight. Is there a better way? We'll come in, if the people say no, they'd rather have it tight? Fine, I'm fine with it. At least we have the right school, and, and we have the right education going, and I went through double sessions. Every time I see those counts go up, please don't crowd these kids into classrooms. So, we, we're ahead of the game. This is what we should, should have done before. They built that lousy, done school. Thanks a lot for the no windows. I appreciated it. So, this is a plan. If there's a way to word it, we'll go back to the drawing board, but this is a meeting for you to help us with the program. Yes, I would probably, later on, I know how I'll vote, but I know that we have the money to do it, so over thirty years. So, I agree with everybody. There is, you're acting like we're throwing this in the wind. We have a plan. There might be a better one later, but the school costs are done. We can afford it over thirty years. Let's get, let's get February 4th done and move this project. I, I hope I'm, I hope I'm making myself clear, and if I can go back to the actual project, one of our, you know, one of our people talked about that dumpster, and I know it's small in comparison to the funding, but it's not the first time I've heard this question, so if by the next meeting, the Finance Committee, if that could be cleared up a little more, because it's not the first time that concerns come in, and are they going to turn around? Are there blind spots? Can we do something, get that answered? How are they coming in? What is the exact, what time are they coming in? Can we get that answered clearly? It was asked at the middle school, and it was asked again tonight, and it's a good question. We all just saw what happened to the Coca-Cola truck today, so...
So, Diane, before, I would say, before we move off of that topic, we, this was a question, the question you're raising was one that a member of the school building committee, Dave Thompson, raised, and between two school building committee meetings, Charlie and his team went back and looked at whether there was a different location for that service area, but, and I, I brought up a screenshot of the site plan, and I'm probably much less qualified than either Charlie or Keith to speak to some of this, but moving, the question was, can the service area be moved toward the back of the site? And, and the answer is that you'd be reconfiguring the entire interior of the project, and you'd have a several million dollar delta between what's been designed to keep the trucks away from the kids and what, what would be possible. And I don't know if Keith wants to speak to, I wish David were here tonight. Unfortunately, David Lane is out of town, because he could speak to the timing of the deliveries. They, they, at all, all of our schools, deliveries do not conflict with school traffic in the morning and the afternoon, so that's very, you know, Lee Rockman and his Buildings Division team are very thoughtful about that. A lot of the deliveries go to the high school and then get sent out to the satellite schools and smaller vehicles, so you don't see too many semi-trucks at the elementary schools. But I, again, that's something I think Keith could probably speak to, and we can be prepared, certainly we'll have David for next week, so we can, we can provide a more thorough answer to that.
Yeah, can we have that completely addressed and...
Keith, did you want to speak to the types and times of deliveries, or...
So, at our elementary schools, there's kind of primarily three or four main deliveries. So, we have our trash pickup that happens, we have our food services deliveries, then we have our general office supply deliveries that might come out of WB Mason or an Office Depot truck, and then we have our daily UPS and FedEx. Despite having a loading dock or not, most of the FedEx, UPS, and WB Mason trucks utilize the front doors of our buildings based on the setup. The high school is the one exception where it does have a loading dock. We do a, a person who mans that loading dock, so that, we do use that more, but in our other schools, they all use the main entrance, so I would anticipate that for our deliveries beyond food services and trash pickup, that they would be utilizing the front doors, they do at all of our schools. Trash pickup is prescribed to be after certain hours and before other hours, so it is meant to not be early mornings, and that was one of the, the concerns that was expressed before. Is it a perfect science? No. If the trash gets picked up at six o'clock in the morning, should it be? No. If it is, call myself or call David Lane, right? And we will call JRM. We have a person that's the conduit between JRM and the town that's meant to help troubleshoot those problems. For food service deliveries, they are all done pre-lunchtime on purpose. It is done in a full semi-truck often, so that would be the one other delivery that would probably be a full semi-truck actually going into the loading dock.
Did you want to follow up?
Go ahead and follow up.
Alan McCarrister, precinct seven. We had to do something like this at a company that I work for, and one of the, could I have the pointer, please? So, we're talking of having the dumpster right there, correct?
In that area.
In that area. So, we have a retaining wall here. So, again, my concern is, is that a truck has got to come in, the dumpster's got to be at an angle. Everything here is square, and so, we have a retaining wall. There, there's, there's a blind corner here. You've got this. if, if this, if somehow the dumpster was at an angle, because a truck can't drive straight into the dumpster, we've got a retaining wall here. So that's one concern. But, let's say that you've got food services here, you've got a loading dock or what have you. The point is that you can put a jackknife turn around right here and head back out the same way and take care of most of the problems. Otherwise, you know, a, a traffic would be here, coming around, backing in with, this wall could get damaged. There's other factors. So, again, a, a simple little jackknife turn to head back out might be really efficient and answer a lot of, a lot of issues.
And that's definitely something that we can ask Charlie and Joe and the team to look at prior to our next meeting. My initial blush is I believe that's wetlands and in a do not disturb zone, but we could look at that. Another point is, we will be able to prevent cars from doing the full loop because we don't want them doing it, so there will be bollards to keep traffic out of doing the full access road around. So trucks won't have that ability, so we are controlling it to being in that one spot. I know you spoke about trucks, sometimes they find their own way and they'll try to weave around the, but it will be purposely put in, that way we have egress for fire trucks and they have access around the entire building, but.
Similar to the, like the high school and stuff like that.
Yes, so that way, but we can prevent, you know, cars that shouldn't be back there from being there. But that's definitely something we can ask Charlie and Joe to double check.
And, and it's a good question, and actually it's a good segue into, into an additional point, is that we, we probably have eight to 10 months of design left. And I think what, what the MSBA approved at the schematic design was, was a project budget that had been thoroughly vetted, but a lot of the fine detail and fine design has yet to happen, and that'll happen at the, at the building committee level, and certainly.
It's, it's just not the dumpster at my, my overall.
Can you go to the mic, please? Because people at home might have the same questions.
It's just not the dumpster, it's a service area and so forth. If you're backing in, driving in, but backing out, or vice versa, it's the safety, not only of the vehicle, but the environment. So, you know, if there was some sort of easement, a gravel easement, I don't know.
And I should have said, I think three or four of us have already taken that note down, so.
Got it, yeah. I didn't want to be the dead horse, but.
No, it's a good point. I'll ask the audience if you don't mind, you can ask questions at the podium, but not in the middle. Ma'am.
I'm Josephine Yaminsky, Precinct 4. I live at Two Ranches Circle. My property abuts this project right on the corner. We are, we are talking about the, the dumpster and the, and the traffic. And I had that concern back in May of eight, May 8th of last year, that this building sits right on top of my property and especially the dumpster and service area, which is right on top of my property. I had posed the same issue you have about the trucks backing up. The roadway is a one-way it now, and it's a one-way as it's posed now. Right now, I live right on that corner. The trash gets picked up at 8:30 in the morning, okay? Sometimes that, that trash collector goes right down that street and disregards that it's a one-way. I have seen parents and children walking in the middle of that road when dumpsters are coming down, picking up the trash. So I posed that to the traffic committee, I have posed it to the building committee in the beginning, I had asked if we could move that cafeteria, so we could move that dumpster location to another location, and I, they proposed that it could not happen. I proposed an L-shaped building back in May of eight. We didn't have to have a building that just kind of broke up the field from everything else. It hides that soccer field, so the town can't even use that soccer field unless it goes all the way around that building. I just think it's, it's a difficult corner there. There's wetland, so you can't change that roadway. So I know deliveries are happening in the morning, and I know that, that trash is being picked up roughly 8:30 in the morning. So, I just wanted to clarify that. I'm not, I'm a town meeting member as well, I'll be voting on this. I'm not happy about the design of the building, I made that clear. Nothing has changed since May 8th of last year on the design of this building, of trying to make it respectful of the community and not putting it on top of, of neighbors that live there, on top of the, the neighborhood. There are other ways we could have designed this building. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Can I ask, why is 8:30 a problem? I, I think I missed something. You said the trash comes at 8:30.
Well, it was one day, 8:30, there was a assembly, so all the parents and grandparents were coming to park. And so, everybody was parking both sides of the road, people were, you know, people were walking, they were trying to get to 8:30, 9 o'clock, I don't know, assembly. A lot of traffic, and it was very disheartening for me to see that trash having to be picked up, and people are trying to navigate with little children too in tow. So I think it's just a little dangerous area. And now especially, we are, that's still a one-way road. You can't see the building from that end of La Bea there. It says do not enter. You can't see it on the diagram. But now the building, you'll see it from that one-way, do not enter. I don't think it's going to stop anybody from shooting down that roadway.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a little concern about it.
If I threw you to Keith, you say you have the ability to contact your rubbish hauler and communicate with them? Do they pick up the same day every week? Many days?
They do.
So, if your staff at that school knows they have a special event, can't somebody call them up and tell them to hold off picking up the trash for a day?
I mean, we, right, we've not done that in the past, it's certainly something that we could explore in the future.
Somebody just put a little effort to that?
The school would let me know, I would reach out to Frank who works with DPW and through David Lane's office.
It seems like a simple thing.
Make that request, that they pick up an hour later, they pick up two hours later, whatever it might be. Again, if, if.
But you've got to know about these things in order to.
Right.
Be proactive.
And if town contract, if contractors of the town are observed not following the rules of the road, that's information that would be important for residents to continue to bring to myself, to David Lane's, that we can continue to work with those contractors to make sure they are following, following the rules that have been set forth.
And just for the information, it's the police department that writes fines for the rubbish haulers that break the rules. Gonna let them know too.
Thank you. So we had a fine presentation. Are there any more questions on the presentation? There were some other issues within the warrant discussion that hadn't been covered yet. Mr. Toomey.
Yeah, just, John Toomey, 9 Franklin Street. Just something that strikes me about what's going on now. It's going to take town meeting approval, and you've got all these town meeting members saying no, who are here tonight. And I, I can tell you, I've talked to a lot of people in town, the school in general, I, I think people more or less would approve it. But I think one of the first things they're going to say is how much? And when you're saying, we'll tell you later.
Actually, sir, I'm going to stop you there. We are not, no, no, I'm going to stop you there. We are not telling you later how much, we're telling you how much now.
The reality is.
Sir, I'm telling you that there's a price tag.
You're going to go to town meeting and you're going to say vote for this building.
For a specific price. Period.
No. That doesn't work. And you don't, you, I don't think the average person out there is going to buy it.
Well, I understand, so I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to, I understand the discussion that's happening tonight, and it's normal and natural and I understand it, I get it. It's the elephant that's in the room. But, your statement is inaccurate. We are proposing a warrant article for a fixed amount of money. A number.
Maybe.
No, not maybe, a number, sir. No, it is no maybe about it, there is a number here.
That's the impression that's coming across.
Wait, I'm telling you that the warrant, sir, I'm telling.
From the number of people who are agreeing with my.
Sir, the warrant article has a number, a fixed number. The question before us is how we're going to pay for that number. And I understand, it's an important question. I went through one of the battles. I know what you're saying. I understand that there is a, but the number is the number, the project is the project, it's the funding that's the question, the elephant in the room.
All I'm saying is, I think you should take another review within the board, just to really think what your chances are of getting this passed. I, I, as I say, I, I think the building can get approved, but I think there's confusion about the money, and that's, could kill it very easily. And I, I think you're right, we need a school. You've come up with a plan. It seems to have gone over very well. As I say, I've talked to a lot of people, and in general, they approved the school, but the question in their mind is money, and they want firm answers. And they, you're not coming up with a firm answer, you're coming up with a maybe. It's you, it's your opinion, it's your job, you've got to, you're coming up with a plan and you're pushing it through. And all I'm saying is, in my opinion, it's not going to work. Thank you.
Sir?
What is the life expectancy of this new school? How long is it supposed to last?
I believe it said 50 years. This is being built as a 50-year school.
That's it?
Five zero, 50 years.
So that's the, kind of the minimum from the MSBA's perspective. I mean, we have a lot of schools that are, we have a number of schools that are older than 50 years.
Why is it though, we, we got the Foster Block, we got St. Mary's School, we got the old Holton Richmond, those schools have been around, this building's been around for over 100 years. Why can't we build a better school that'll last 100 years? They, like you say, what cost us today in 40 or 50 years, it's going to cost, so why not build a better school that's going to last 100 years?
Yeah, I, I don't want to give the impression that the, that the school falls down after 50 years. I mean, when we borrow money, we're, we're, we are restricted by law to borrow for no less than the expected life. So we, when we borrow for a fire truck, we can't finance that for 50 years because there's no way you're going to get 50 years out of a fire truck. When we borrow for a school, the, the assumption is it will last at least 50 years. I think Smith School's a terrible example, given the construction methodology and materials used, but, but I think you're absolutely right. Holton Richmond, the town hall, hopefully this school should last a lot longer than 50 years based on the way it's been designed and.
But we have a high school and a Smith School, and it's like 40, 45 years and they, they fall apart, so.
I wasn't around in the 70s, but I'm going to blame people who were here in the 70s designing those.
The contractors, that the schools are hiring to build these buildings, are they going for the cheapest price and not good quality materials? The building should last longer than that. I mean, you might have to go in and renovate it, do the classrooms over, but when a building is built solid, it should last 100 years, and we're tearing them down in 40, 45. I don't understand it.
I think, that's, that's a great point, you know.
I mean, you spend a little bit more now to get, I mean, I mean, I was in the heating business. Guys will buy a half-ton pickup, they, they overfill it, and the truck is falling apart in, in less than a year, and they can't understand it. Well, it's, it's not built strong enough to do the job.
Right, so.
So if you don't have a foundation, it's not going to, it's not going to last.
Right, and, and that's a great point. The whole thing is, you named two buildings that did fall apart, and, and you're right. And, and it's a shame that we went the cheap route. I, I can't agree with you more that even the original high school was not the original plan at 60 Cabot. So, you, you're right on everything you've said. I think at this point, again, lessons learned, I'm always one that believes in education, that we now are renovating. So, I was the entering class of Thorpe School, second grade, I'm going to tell you, it's been a good 50 years since then. And now we look at the Thorpe School, well, it's probably going to be, need to be renovated, but it definitely doesn't need, in my opinion, I probably shouldn't say this.
I think that's a solid school.
It doesn't need to be knocked down. That's, you're right, we should get to that point where we're doing this and, and the foundation. That's why they made the determination of not renovating the Smith School. That's why the Dunn Wing came down. Thank God, I was, I was cheering that on. But, you're right, and again, 60 Cabot was a second choice. That's what I'm, I keep saying I want to get away from. We've got to do everything right. This school is based on some good numbers. It wasn't the original plan to go in and do what we're doing. It was, because of MSBA giving us numbers, we would have been in a predicament within 15 years, I think that table goes, within 15 years, we would have been in a predicament. I can't agree with you more. We've made some mistakes, we should learn from them, we should build solid buildings so that they just renovate and not have to be torn down and rebuilt. I can't agree with you more.
I mean, do they go with the cheapest bid when this goes out?
Right, that's what I think he was explaining now, that they're not, they don't do. No longer have to do. I think at one time, I think he said it, they had to take the lowest at one point, or.
Do you want to speak to that, Charlie?
But I, but I believe that now that they can go by reputation and all, so.
And, and to your point, we're not building to the minimum. While we may have to go out to bid, we're not designing to the minimum. And I understand your point, I fully understand your point. So, I'll, if you'd like to speak to this, sir?
Sure. So, a couple of different points. So, so the 50-year school concept is the MSBA saying that's the expectation, and it's right, and these buildings will last more than 50 years, that's A. B, the, the process that the design and construction goes through on one of these public schools under the MSBA's funding is very, very supervised and very carefully monitored. The expectation is, and the case with these schools, is we are putting in excellent materials, we're putting in excellent systems that are very sophisticated, and they are very, very well-built. So from a construction point of view, from a systems point of view, they're really top-shelf buildings. They're generally better built than private sector buildings are built because, because they're publicly funded, and it's the expectation of the MSBA. They're sustainable buildings, they have, as, as was mentioned earlier, we get reimbursement for sustainability, which means that we're putting in highly efficient plumbing, light fixtures, HVAC systems. And, and in terms of construction, the, the public construction in the state of Massachusetts has dramatically changed over the last 20 years. The CMIT risk process is for the general contractor, and they have been selected based on qualification and reputation. There are still a series of filed sub-bids which will be bid out as part of the process where, where cost matters. You don't have to take the low bidder, you can take another low bidder, but all of those contractors are pre-qualified in advance. So there's a fairly elaborate and detailed pre-qualification process. So no one bids on the project who hasn't been pre-qualified by the town in advance. So I think there's a lot of, I think it's a very different process than when you built the buildings in the 70s you're talking about. The 70s was when the K-Car was constructed, right? So, we know about the 70s. But, so I think, I think it's a different, a different construction world than it was then.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could extend the coffee break in the morning that we have at McDonald's relative to the construction of buildings, a point that I'd like to make about this is that in 1970s, we had had dramatically lowered standards for constructing public buildings. And you can name off a whole litany of buildings that were built in that time period, whether it's the Roxbury District Court, University of Dartmouth College down in, in Westport, the Salem State Library, or the Dunn Wing and the, and the Smith School. These buildings were built at a period where the, the standards for construction were lowered dramatically, and they basically re, re, kicked back to a much more higher standard since then. Also, this school was designed by an architect that came out of Texas, no, no.
Not this school.
Yes, it was. Carl L. Rollit and Scott designed this school originally. The original, the original school was, was designed by Carl L. Rollit and Scott, the same person that designed the Dunn Wing. I know, I was on a committee, and the guy was a great guy who came and was our representative. But they had construction techniques that were unbelievable, like the air conditioning units were made for the desert in Texas, not for the northeast storms here. So the first winter we had a storm here, the control units and all the AC units and the control units and all the AC units and heaters didn't work because the circuit boards were on printed cardboard and not on plastic. Minimal things like that. We can go on and on. But I think that anyone's fear of the construction of this building, they've done a very, very good job in planning this. The more modern construction techniques are far superior to what they were 20 or 30 years ago, maybe with the exception of sprinkler systems and a PVC pipe, as we've talked about, which is absolutely absurd as well. But it's, again, the construction industry has lowered these standards so that you, for a long time there, they were building really lousy buildings, and they've been much better built. And this is a much better-designed building than those that were designed 20 or 30 years ago. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the presentation that we've had so far? Sir, Mr. Foey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Foey, Precinct 7. I think I understand a little bit of what you're talking about, looking for the approval for the whole school at the February Town Meeting, and then the funding after that. I'm not totally familiar with the Town Warrant process. Is it possible to just put in the request for the funding on the, excuse me, for the building itself at the proposed costs of $52 million in the February Town Meeting? And then perhaps put in there, there are going to be four alternative methods for paying for it? And these are the four general methods, and we're going to have further discussion on those. And one of those, which is the most effective, most cost-effective to the town, will be chosen. And then you could put that on the May Town Meeting. So approve the building in February, and then in the next Town Meeting, come back with your proposal for choice of the four, or five, or whatever choices you can recommend at that point, and say to the town, this is what we've looked at. We looked at all the methods we had mentioned originally, and now we've come up with this as the most cost-effective. And perhaps separating the two might be easier, make it more palatable, to get them through the Town Meetings.
So there are some logistical and mechanics to whether that's appropriate. I'll turn to the Town Manager to speak to that. I'm going to punt on this one.
I've realized two things in hindsight. First, it would have been immensely helpful had the warrant that the selectmen received Friday been in the hands of all Town Meeting members before tonight. Historically, the Board has a chance to vote the warrant through. Often, changes are made, which is why that isn't the case. Tomorrow morning, the warrants are going into production, and they're going out to the Finance Committee and the Town Meeting. That's our typical course. So I think, so first, I think a lot of the questions raised tonight might have been addressed if this document had been in everybody's hands. And then secondly, I think if I had completed the presentation before the questions started, that might have also helped a little bit to address some of the questions that were raised tonight. So I may take a moment, if that's all right.
Yes, please.
And, and finish working through the warrant. But I think the question you're raising is, I think, what this document attempted to do. So I, the, the document that the Town Meeting members will be receiving, the first two-thirds of that address everything we've already discussed. The, the project timeline, the costs, the maximums that the MSBA will approve. So we do have an actual project budget. We have a, we have a firm cap on what this project can be, and that's a $52 million construction project, $31.5 million of which would belong to the town, and $20.5 million of which will belong to the MSBA. So when, when the town actually issues debt for this project, we'll be issuing $31.5 million worth of principal. When this project budget was completed in November and submitted to the MSBA, the, the financial team, we have our Finance Director Rodney Conley in the room, myself, Joe Collins, sat with the financial advisors to look at the different financing options that would be available to the town for this project. And the warrant document does explain, it, it sort of bookends what the options before the town are. When I was hired four years ago, the direction was, let's see if there's a path forward to build this school without requiring a debt exclusion, because that's been the way that schools have been built historically in Danvers. We have a school stabilization fund, which is essentially a savings account that the town has used for probably 20 years, running up into the high school project. There was about $7 million in that account, and then that account was drawn down during the life of the high school project, during the peak debt years for the high school project, to offset that debt and allow it to be done within the levy limit. Since that bottomed out in fiscal year '16, it's been built up the last couple of years, this past July 1st. It has just, just under $6 million in that account. So the, the warrant explains that if, if this project is financed over 30 years, it can rely, it will need to rely on that school stabilization fund between now and about seven years from now in order to be able to finance the project within existing levy capacity. And I think that's, that's the point that Selectman Langley was attempting to make, is that there's a plan, and that's the plan that we've been working on for about five years, which is to, is there a way to do this project without requiring a debt exclusion? When the financial advisors presented other options to the town, one of the other options they presented, which is something they present to a lot of their clients, is, on a 20-year model, the, the interest payments on that $31 million is reduced from $28.5 million to $14 million. That would require debt exclusion because we don't have the, the capacity within our existing resources to do a 20-year financing on a project like this. So the, the two options I think that the selectmen are wrestling with, and we started talking about this at the Financial Summit before the holidays, and I think they'd like to continue getting feedback from Town Meeting members and residents, is we have a plan. If, if Town Meeting votes the project forward on February 4th, which is a Town Meeting decision, do we build the school or not? Nobody but the Town Meeting makes that decision. We can do that. It'll be about $60 million once all of the principal and interest is paid off by fiscal year 2052. The other option the Board is thinking about is, do you finance it over 20 years, paying it off in 2042, and having a total project cost of $46 million instead of $60? There's no right or wrong answer. Our job is to present the material so that folks can make informed decisions about how they want to do these things. So the, the warrant gets into that detail, which unfortunately was not on the presentation, and I think probably would have been helpful had it, had it been in folks' hands. And the warrant also goes into what the tax impact would be under each of those models. Because the, the debt exclusion question is separate from the, the taxation question. Because the taxation question is, what is the impact on a tax bill to do a project or not do a project? The debt exclusion question, and I, and again, I was, I think I was born the year, probably two and a half was passed, but that, that question is a question that goes directly from a chief elected board, a Board of Selectmen, to the voters. And I think that confused me when we started to look at that in November. The, the Town Meeting does not vote on a debt exclusion, other than at the polls as a resident of the town of Danvers. They do vote on the project itself. And I, so you, the, the Town Meeting vote is, do we do this project or not? Whether the, whether the decision precedes or predates that, or comes after that, I think, is the question that this Board is wrestling with, which is, you know, we have, there is a financing plan that works, but there's another option that could save the town $15 million. And again, that's a question that we, as staff, we can present that material, but, but the elected officials and the, and the voters have to decide those questions. So that's what the rest of the warrant talked about. And, and again, I think it, you know, I think for a special Town Meeting like this, it's a little bit unique. It's not an annual Town Meeting where it's the same, it's the budget, it's the grounds article, et cetera, et cetera. This is a little different. And, and again, in hindsight, I think it's on the website now, it was on today, but had we had copies in Town Meeting members' hands, I think that would have been helpful tonight. So that's a lesson learned for staff.
Thank you.
A little humor. Move the question.
Well, before we do. Yeah. Are there other questions from the, from the audience? Mr. Toomey? Mr. Toomey, I, I call on you, sir.
Just an information question. Debt exclusion. Is the selectmen voted? The, where does it go there, after that? Does it go to the Town Meeting, or does it go to a?
No, no, the select. So the. So. Yes, the audience members are trying to answer. The selectmen, if they choose a referendum path, will vote on whether we want a referendum, and that will go to the, a town-wide election.
Okay, so it's a referendum type of vote?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I understand. Now, are there other, other questions, please? I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak, ask their questions, get them up, because we do have another workshop coming up about this. I understand the, the concept of, and I think that we should at least consider the discussion at the 26th workshop about funding. Because I think that there, again, as a selectman, it would be very easy for me to say, let's go 30 years. Simple. No argument, no muss, no fuss. Other than the fact that I happen to know by the virtue of the financial models that there are reasonable alternatives. Whether you, whether I consider them reasonable and you consider them reasonable are two different things, potentially. But I can see where if we go to a 20-year model with a debt exclusion for this project only, if I ask you, the average taxpayer, to pay $2 more a month, we can save $14 million. So I agree. It is about your tax dollars. I agree, it's about the pocketbook you have. And my question is, do you have the long-term view or the short-term view? And if your short-term view is that $2, you know, I want to save those $2 a month, and accept the fact that it's going to cost $14 million more for the project, that's okay. That's everybody's individual decision. So I, I, I think that, based on the discussion here tonight, I, I'm going to ask that part of the discussion on the 26th be about the funding options that we were considering to discuss on the 11th. But as Selectman Langley said, we have a plan to pay for this. We know we're going to pay for this. It's just now, how, what's the best way to pay for this? Not whether we're going to, not if there, the numbers change. I, I take umbrage with the suggestion that we don't know the number. We do know the number. The Town Meeting will vote on a specific dollar amount. So the, the, and that doesn't change based on the funding source. So it doesn't, I'm sorry, on the, how we're going to pay for it. So I appreciate the presentation about the project tonight. I'm sure it'll be, the questions that have been raised that weren't being able to answer tonight, logistical questions can be answered on the, on the 26th. It's a Saturday from 9 to 12, I believe, in this room, here, to discuss further details about the project. Again, last opportunity, anybody else have anything? Yes, sir?
One quick one. Alan Carrison, Precinct 7. So if we went with that debt exclusion and it passed for $2 a month, let's say, as you're describing, what's the term of those $2?
20 years.
20 years.
A debt exclusion is a specific separation for only the life of the project, only the life of the debt.
Yep, so at the end of 20 years, there's a possibility that the $2 comes back off of the taxpayer.
You stop paying it. If you read, when, when you get an opportunity to read, you will see that the average tax bill under 30 years.
Did he get this?
No, because they were presented, emailed tomorrow. Under, they'll, they'll be mailed out tomorrow, or you can go on the website. Under 30 years, to pay for the project, the number that we presented, you would pay the average taxpayer, obviously each one of us is different because we have different homes, would pay $157 years, but $157 a year for 30 years. If we did a debt exclusion, you would pay $179 a year for 20 years. In effect, you'd be paying $2 more a month, but shaving off 10 years of payments. And that 10 years, as you know, if you have a mortgage, it's the last 10 years, it's all, it's all, all interest. It's, that's when the, I'm sorry, that's when the principal comes down. The first 10, 15 years is all interest and is going down and declining. If we go with 30-year, we're going to go level funding. So the details are in this document. I think it's still worthy of a discussion. There's no decision been made tonight on what the funding source is. The discussion is, the warrant as presented, is it, are we comfortable with the plan and the number that's projected as the price for that plan? So, and that's what the selectmen will choose to do, to, to move tonight. Move the warrant forward so FinCom can have the same consideration. Again, any last, last call? All right. I'll adjourn to motion on the warrant article.
Overt as presented.
Second.
Motion made, is, made and seconded on the warrant article as presented. Is there any further question? Hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item.
If anybody leaves, does anybody have a little kid that would like a little calendar? It's adorable. No?
The Town Manager will report to the Board on various items of interest.
It's hard to get excited after a conversation like that. I'll do my best, though. Just a couple of items for you tonight. The first, you received notification with your materials tonight that the, the decision with respect to the Osborne Tavern has been appealed. So, you know, Joe's office and the attorney's office will now be awaiting direction from the ABCC in terms of when a hearing date may be scheduled for that.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question through you, to the Town Clerk or the Town Manager? We voted a three-day suspension at the end of the appeal period and three days held in abeyance for one year. When does the clock start ticking on that one year?
Mr. Clark?
Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, it would have started the night the Board voted the penalty. But that would also be subject to review by the ABCC during their deliberation on the, on the appeal.
So if I may, if this three days served doesn't start till the end of the appeal period, why wouldn't the one year start counting from the end of the appeal period? Or the time they serve the three days?
That's a good point.
So.
We can, we can see clarification from, from counsel and from the ABCC during, during the process that will be pointing out.
Right, and I'm wondering if this Board should clarify that language by a vote?
Well, I, I guess I would venture to say that we made a, we made a ruling based on a specific date. Someone has the opportunity to appeal that ruling. If the appeal fails, the ruling stands.
Right, but it's.
That would be, and normally we do the, the abeyance a year from the night of the, of the, actually, the night of the notification, because Joe has to provide notification to them, sign notification.
So I, I would just offer that was, we didn't clarify that one year. We should have been more conscious, thought about that and made that part of our motion, that the one year is from the date of the serving of the three days, the original three days. So I don't know if we need to make clarification by a motion, wait for Joe to talk to the attorney.
I think I defer to Joe to talk to the attorney and find out and get clarity from, from that point. And then if there's clarifications necessary, we can follow up.
Mr. Chairman, I understand the, the thought process of a selectman, and I would say it would be a bit premature for the Board to do anything on the vote that they have previously taken until it plays out through ABCC. And we, we will advise the Board as we, as we proceed.
I think it'd be too late then to make a change in the, the motion.
I think it's already too late. It's already been forwarded.
We made the motion.
Without clarification. It wasn't specified.
And, and I would suggest that they've made a, they've made an appeal on the motion we made, so if we were to change the motion.
Well, they're appealing the three days.
Might I suggest to my colleagues that they learn a lesson from this, as I did, in not stating certain things prematurely? So it was very difficult not to speak.
I wanted to bring that up, in the unfortunate event that we ever have to handle something like that again.
Let's hope not.
Joe, you'll remember that 10 years from now. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Town Manager?
No. Same, same concept, different subject. The, we, we also were notified between the last meeting and now that the, the, there has been an appeal filed on the, on the dangerous dog decision that the Board made. And Chairman Trask has agreed to work with counsel to make sure that the Board is represented when that preliminary hearing takes place next week. The preliminary hearing is before a clerk magistrate to determine whether, to summarize, the Board was on solid footing and, and making the decision without prejudice. And the clerk magistrate has the authority to reject the request for appeal immediately. And if it is not rejected, then it would go before a judge. So that process is also underway. Just to, I wanted to provide a quick update on both of those. And lastly, I provided, a question was asked at the last meeting about the new letterhead. So I provided just a brief overview of the, the long process. As I say in the memo, it's a, it's a, it's an easy question with a long answer. But we had a, a staff committee about a year and a half ago come together to, to establish a vision statement and set of core values for Town employees in terms of how we want to interact with each other and present ourselves to the community. And from that effort, a second committee that's being chaired by the Assistant Town Manager, which is an implementation committee, was looking for ways to embed these core values into the things that we as employees do. And a standard, updated letterhead was one of the recommendations that came out of that. So a hat. So a hat tip to the selectman who noticed a change in our letterhead, and that's the short answer as to why it looks a little different.
Those are the retired ones.
And that's all that I have. I think we've thrown a lot of ground tonight.
Thank you. All right. Board will consider consent calendar items as they appear attached.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask that we take the, either vote on each group individually or take the sale of secondhand articles and discuss that separately?
If people are remenable, we'll vote on the bulk, except for sale of secondhand articles to be discussed separately. Is everybody fine with that?
Thank you.
All right. I'll take a motion on all of the consent calendar items attached, except for sales.
I move that we move all the consent calendar items except the sale of secondhand articles.
Second.
Motion made. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we have an opioid crisis in our town, in our state, in our country. Many of these unfortunate people with the disease of addiction find a way to raise funds through these secondhand shops, either something they've stolen or something they've borrowed. And the secondhand shops, they're not doing anything illegal, they're following the guidelines. They take a picture, they hold the article for 30 days, but they give these unfortunate people an opportunity to raise funds to go out and buy drugs. Last year, I asked that the business community help to be part of solution, not the problem. Other than the banks in this town, no businesses supports Danvers Cares, whose mission is to help young folks make intelligent decisions. And through their efforts, smoking is down, drinking is down, vaping is up, unfortunately. But these folks are not breaking a law, but they're not part of the solution for a very serious problem. And again, none of them have stepped forward to help to be part of the solution. So I know I'm not going to get the three votes needed, but I'm going to make a motion that we do not approve these license renewals.
For clarity, what would be the solution you would seek?
Reaching out to them, which we've tried to do, and have them be part of the solution, and understand that if some young person comes in with somebody's lady's jewelry, that they ask questions and just say no. And not take the jewelry and sometime later sell it at a profit.
So have you made that in the motion, not to do that?
Not...
Not to approve?
Not to approve.
So the motion's on the table, not to approve. To be consistent, for the sake of discussion, I'll second the motion. I don't support it, but I'll second it for continuity.
I've stated my position very clearly.
Anybody have any comments?
I can't support it. We, trying to think if I was a selectman or on FinCom, when we were dealing with the kiosks down at the mall, and it was a big-to-do, same thing, illegals and all that, and our police chief really stepped it up and they put in great procedures, so unless, how long ago was it, Joe, was I on? But unless somebody feels, actually, I haven't heard a complaint since they did that, and I would say that maybe talk to the police chief and see if he feels that there's a problem, but, yeah.
If I may, Diane, there are guidelines in place, and as I said, these folks are following the guidelines as written.
Yeah.
But it's a much deeper problem, that following the procedures that are written and ignoring the problem, the root problem that we have with these folks that have these drug addictions. So it's just, they're not breaking the law, they're taking the pictures, they're holding the goods. If nobody says anything in a certain timeframe, they sell it, and they make a profit. And somebody just got high because they were able to pawn off something that they more than likely stole. And I feel very strongly about that. Again, they're not breaking the law, and I just wish that they'd reach out and try to help be part of the solution.
I appreciate the amazing work you've done on that, and I think perhaps inviting them to a Cares meeting, and, you know, if there's anything we can do to help, great, but not renewing their license, I can't do that.
Yes, I also remember sometime in the past 13 years, the police have come before us a couple of times and presented the regulations and processes that they go through, and they've affirmed them. And I too, if, I too, I feel that we can't compel someone to do something, if they're doing something legal, they're doing something legal, and compelling them to support or do extra actions by holding a license, I can't support. So I won't be in support of this either. Any other comments?
Nope.
All right. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that the sentiments expressed by Mr. Bennett are very laudable. At the same time, I think that if anything by way of increased burden of the licensee, as far as whatever Dan is talking about, I think it would have to be by way of an amending policy or, you know, doing something, you know, official in writing and setting standards. I don't think that there is anything before the board by way of standards that could be, would be workable. So I agree that it's an important area, but I think that maybe we have to look at whatever our licensing criteria is, and perhaps Mr. Bennett would care to offer amendment at somewhat later point as to amendment of that policy.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, because we're talking about somebody having a conscience and looking and thinking before they give this young person, or it could be older. The average drug addict dies in their 30s, unfortunately. But it's when they have that eye-to-eye contact that they got to decide something is rotten in Denmark, and I'm going to say no. And we can't legislate that, unfortunately. But I just want to make my point. Thank you.
So the current motion is to not approve. All those in favor of the current motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
Thank you for listening.
I make a motion that we accept the sale of secondhand particles.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other comment on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Thank you. All right. We now move to correspondence and new business, old business, previous business. I'll start with Mr. Clark.
Since it's 10 minutes of 10, I don't have anything to say.
Mr. Mills?
The monthly older men's dinner at the Senior Center will be, I think, this coming Monday. I am buying Mr. Brad Street's ticket, and I would offer that anybody who will come for the first time to our dinner will be my guest.
Thank you.
So I hope others might decide to come.
In what age do they have to be?
I think that all ages are welcome, but this is dangerous. Somebody proposes to bring his wife.
Oh, no women. Get out, women.
To the men's club.
Oh, my God.
I'm not going to address that. I'll just buy the ticket.
You shouldn't.
Of any male who wants to come to the dinner for the first time. It's cute. It's a cute dinner. The food is good. The Senior Center is a wonderful place to visit, and that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Selectman Nylenlo.
You're the only one that can get away with saying that publicly. And the fact that you said it's cute, that takes me out of the picture. I don't do anything cute. Couple of things, February 11th, what time is that?
I think that's up for discussion at this point. I don't think that's...
So we haven't booked that?
We have not. I think that, I think based on...
Can you at least tell me if it's morning or night?
Oh, it's an evening. If it's a Monday, it would be evening, if that were to happen.
I might be a little busy in February. Bill Nickerson, I think, has earned total respect for what he requests, and he asked about the water pressure on Senna Street. I think that we should be given an answer on...
We'll give him a phone call tomorrow.
Yeah, and can we get an answer on that, too? I think he deserves that. The stop sign going for, did we explain to that person that they have to file the paperwork for this, or, I think...
I think, we directed it to Town Manager and Dan, who is a member, and I think between them.
So I think they're a little confused. Short Road doesn't touch both North Belgian and Belgian. I think people forget that, that it starts there. That's where the break is of the two roads. So I'm assuming he means short and then not the one that comes around the corner on Mass. So Mass have, Short Road, I think, is halfway down North Belgian, so I think that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, I think the part of the Town Manager will reach out to Aaron, to reach out to somebody to...
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, when it comes under new business, I don't say anything to the end.
See if they want to come before DTAC and...
Other than that, I had a really good New Year's.
Very good.
Not much else going on. No, how long it's off of growth? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to discuss next steps on the funding?
If you would like. Sure.
I'm thinking the 11th may be too late.
No, I think it is too late as well. So we've heard clearly that, and we've been promoting, should I bring it up in my new comments and we'll kick in? We've been promoting since before the holidays, the fact that funding has options. We've not committed to a, this board has not committed to a debt exclusion or 30-year or 20-year. We've kept an open mind and looked at what the pros and cons of each are. And I think that it was an elephant in the room that was going to be discussed no matter what tonight, and, you know, and it's proper that it is. I think on the 26th, we'll have an opportunity between now and then, people will see the warrant article with some explanation of the financing opportunities. On the 26th, we can talk about those opportunities and decide what the next steps are for going forward. I think that I've heard loud and clear that ambiguity on how we fund this is, may jeopardize the vote on the 4th. We have 149 town meeting members, 48, if they are concerned about this, will stop this. We had six or eight in the room tonight who have expressed that immediately, and some of them with knowledge of what the options are. As I said before, it's the easiest thing in the world for, and the town management is not proposing one thing or the other. The town manager, doing his duty, and the town financial leaders have said, you have options. Here's the pros, here's the cons, here's the ups, here's the downs. I don't think those have been fully expressed. I don't know if that full expression will change people's minds about debt exclusion. People have a, many people have a lock on how they feel about debt exclusion, and I understand that's their bent. That's the way they are. I think on the 26th, we should take the opportunity to flesh out the details that are in the warrant article and discuss the pros and cons. And if people want to move forward with the understanding, with an educated understanding, an informed decision, that one will cost us more than the other, long-term versus short-term, so be it. That's up to the town meeting.
Well, I think it's our responsibility to get the project approved. After three years of working on this and knowing that the cost is only going to go up, it's imperative that we get it approved on the 4th. I heard tonight from a number of people that without knowing how we decide to pay for it, regardless of the fact that it's not, it's going to be up to the voters to decide if it's a debt exclusion, certain members want to know that we're going to do A or B. And they're not going to vote for the project. I just, those are my observations, and I did hear a couple of people say that they did get it, that it's a good project, we'll approve it and determine how to pay for it at some time in the future, but I don't think there's, I don't know that that will get it through town meeting.
So looking at the timeline, we have tonight's meeting, obviously.
We've got one more meeting.
We've got one more meeting. The 26th, no matter what we discuss, won't have the weight of the selectman behind it for the method of funding.
Correct.
So are you desirable to make a decision tonight or wait till the 22nd?
I would desirable to wait till town meeting, but after tonight's conversations...
You and I both.
It's, let's get the town meeting vote, and I don't want to go on and say, we're going to do A, and then to come around, turn around and say, we'll do B. That's not proper reading.
I felt, yeah, I felt that was disingenuous. I wasn't supportive of that.
So I just, I've got, we've got to the 22nd, so you can certainly put it on the agenda if you would for discussion or not discussion, but we can all wrestle with it over the next few, next week.
So, okay, I think that on the 22nd, we should have an agenda item to finalize the selectman's decision...
If we decide to do that, or not.
The selectman's decision about funding methodology. Because I believe you're correct. It's us to say referendum or not a referendum, and it won't wait till after town meeting, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Were you all done, Diane, with your new stuff?
Nope. If nobody else is, I'm not sure if Bill's going to do it, but I will be at the FinCom meeting on the 15th, so, but Bill is the liaison, so if he wants to be the representative, that's fine.
Okay.
I think I'll be in any and all meetings going forward regarding this, just to observe.
Been going to, you know.
Are you all set with your items?
I had a good New Year's.
Good.
You said that.
I know, I just wanted to make sure you were all set. I don't want to cut you off. Two things, one is I will, our next selectman's meeting is after the MMA. I will be attending the MMA. I've signed up today, tonight, if you still want to sign up, is your last night for the early bird pricing. And I'll have to ask the Town Manager if there was some commitment I made at the MMA. Was there anything, presentation or anything that I was supposed to be at?
No.
Okay.
You can get anything you'd like.
You're voting at the annual meeting all year.
Yeah, I get that, I get that.
There's a couple of good meetings on Friday.
I know, but I didn't know if there was an award or something, I forgot all about. Okay. All right. The other thing to the Town Clerk. I know...
Actually, hold that. The town is being recognized for its annual report. You will note, a couple of years ago, we completely, I'm looking over here and realizing, given everything else that's on the agenda tonight, that didn't end up on my update, but the, we completely overhauled our annual report a couple of years ago. I'm sure everybody in the town meeting members remember that. It's, we've got it out a little earlier, we've put a little more information in it, and it will be recognized on Saturday night as an award recipient. So we will have somebody there to receive the award, but there's no obligation to be there.
I just couldn't remember. Someone asked something, and I couldn't remember.
Is that when Matt Light's going to be there? That was the only great thing on the agenda.
There's some pretty good, I don't know if any of the selectmen are going, but there's some pretty good workshops on here.
Friday has some good ones.
So, and the trade show is always amazing, if you need pencils. Is that? Yes, I was. I was going to ask the Town Clerk. I realize this is probably futile, but we have an ordinance relating to cabs to, and they are supposed to, at some point at the beginning of the year, reaffirm some information, assurance, and so on and so forth. Have any of them done it?
Mr. Chairman, I, we sent out renewal applications to, I believe, four cab companies.
Four?
We have yet to receive a renewal package pack, and the police department is aware of it.
Okay. And last year, did we receive them back at all?
We did not.
Okay. What is the deadline for the renewal return?
Well, the renewal, they're renewable during the first, the first month of January on a calendar basis.
Okay, so they have until the end of January to comply?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
They're just all going to stick a U on there, weren't you?
I get it, but we have rules and, thank you. That's all I have for this evening. I'll, as we usually do, end with Mr. Bennett, so...
Thank you. So let's please remember the veterans, active veterans, retired veterans, keep them in your thoughts so they can protect us. Thank them for their service. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
And I...